Okay, so I think we can-
We can go.
-start whenever you're ready. Well, I told Tom to maybe just give us a thumbs up-
Okay.
...since we don't have an on-air.
Is, um-
Yeah, okay.
I might just have, um, just to make sure Jay-
Do you want to make sure she's here before we start?
Yeah, yeah, she's here, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think whenever you're ready.
Okay, I'd like to call this school committee business meeting to order. It is Tuesday, February 27th. Mrs. Yell, can you take the role, please?
Mayor Yell.
I'm here.
Sarah Hall.
Here.
Andrew Boger.
Present.
Brian Callahan.
Here.
Breonna Higgins, absent. Kathleen Shaw, absent. Juliet Walker.
Present.
Great, can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, great crowd tonight. I'm slowly losing my voice, so I'm gonna try to not speak the rest of the meeting and I'm gonna turn it over to Vice Chair Hall.
You've got a big night tomorrow there.
I've got a big night tomorrow night, so I gotta rest that voice.
Okay, we'll do what we can. So, I didn't see anyone sign up for public comment. Was there anyone who wanted to make a public comment this evening? Okay, then we'll move right along to student and staff recognitions.
All right. Bring my mic up here.
Oh, great, that looks good, okay.
Perfect. All right, as we traditionally have done in the beginning of our school committee meetings, we get to recognize some special students along with some great staff members, and tonight's no different. Tonight, we're recognizing a third grade student, Drew Contrino, and Drew is being recognized for some amazing things and being a great little leader over at the Bresnahan. Drew is a third grade student at the Bresnahan School who's been very involved and is intentional the last month to offer solutions of some social dynamic challenges students were having during recess while using a new playground option called Gaga Ball, or the Gaga Ball Pit. I don't know how to play Gaga Ball, so I'm hoping Drew will show me. As long as I don't have to lift my leg too high, I should be able to-
Sean and I will challenge anybody to Gaga Ball.
Really?
Once we know what it is.
All right, take it easy. At the elementary level, students are learning how to navigate some sometimes tricky social dynamics, following game rules, showing good sportsmanship, and controlling big emotions that arise while playing games. Drew has done a fantastic job brainstorming ideas for how things could run more smoothly for all the students while using the Gaga Ball Pit. He suggested those ideas to the Assistant Principal, Ms. Burns, in an appropriate and helpful manner. She then instituted those changes that Drew came up with and the Gaga Ball Pit has been running much more smoothly ever since. We are very proud of Drew for his active role in solving a problem at the Bresnahan School that has positively impacted the entire grade. Come on up, congratulations Drew.
Congratulations. All right, very proud to meet you. We're gonna take some photos in a minute. I've got so many certificates, I gotta get yours. There it is. Big Drew. We'll take some pictures over here. Ms. Salkowski, you wanna come on over?
No, we're here, Drew.
Parents, feel free to come on up, bring your parents. Leave it, buddy. You can pull that certificate. Right here, behind you there. There you go. The rest of you all, when they come in, come on in. We see the whole family, everybody. All right, family photo now.
All right, we have some staff members we'd like to recognize. May I just wanna grab all of those for me? Thank you, buddy. So, we're recognizing four Bresnahan staff members being recognized for their commitment, dedication, and amazing teamwork creating a supportive learning environment for their students at the Bresnahan Elementary School. The first teacher we'd like to recognize is Julie Carroll. Julie is a general education teacher, runs an efficient, thoughtful, development- developmentally appropriate classroom. Her positivity is contagious to the kids and adults who are in her room. Her flexibility is amazing to everyone that she sees. She highlights the right kids at the right times and gets the best out of each and every learner. Come on up, Julie Carroll. All right, you have to stay up here, Julie, those are the rules. The next Bresnahan teacher that we're going to recognize is Catherine Perrin. As a dedicated instructional assistant, she supports so many different learners throughout the day. She is always positive and always looking to help. What stands out the most is the work she does for one of our students who learns with a communication device. She's a true team player and all of her students love her. Catherine Perrin, come on up. Our next staff member we'd like to recognize is Caitlin Marsh. As a Room Special Education co-teacher, she demonstrates a remarkable commitment to children every day. Through the ups and downs, she is professional and, uh, professional and kind and kid-centered at all times. She is creative, consistently comes forward with amazing proposals, and implements top-notch programming while always seeking feedback on how to improve. Congratulations, Caitlin Marsh.
Sorry, I'm gonna hijack this for one second. Just a quick story about Caitlin. So, my first time substitute teaching was a fourth grade class, and Caitlin was in that class at that day, Mrs. Foster, right? Yes, okay. And the class was so bad that Mrs. Foster made each of the- Caitlin wasn't bad, but the class itself was bad that day. Uh, Mrs. Foster made the whole class write me apology notes. And I still have them, so Caitlin's come a long way.
Our next staff member we'd like to recognize is Cheryl Suprenault, an instructional assistant who is new to our staff. She has stepped in and shown growth and has been remarkable. She puts her students first every second of the day. Cheryl has learned a very challenging protocol to learn skills-based teaching in a very short period of time. The growth of her students has shown since she's joined the team and it's amazing how much because of how caring, consistent, professional she is every day. So, come on up, Cheryl. And just for this entire group, it's an amazing group and they really show what it means to be Newburyport Public School team member. Not only do they exemplify the Bresnahan motto, "Be safe, be kind, be responsible," they are creating a nurturing environment for some of our youngest learners to help them, give them the tools as they grow into the Newburyport portrait of a graduate. We are so grateful for all of your service. Thank you, guys.
Would you like a brief recess?
Yeah, that'd be great.
All right, we'll now take a brief recess. All right. All right, we're going to jump back in with the consent agenda. Mr. Callahan, turning it over to you for the warrants.
We do have warrants. I moved the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $615,251.18 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We have one set of minutes to approve this evening from our last meeting on February 5th. Are there any corrections? I have one, Ms. Yell, just a small thing, but right at the beginning, under the call to order, usually after stood for the Pledge of Allegiance, it says something about the mayor turns the meeting over to Vice Chair Hall, just to indicate that I'm presiding over the meeting. Anything else? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the February 5th minutes?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Theo, it's great to see you, it's been a while.
Good to see you again. Thank you very much. All right, so starting things off with the Bresnahan today. For the annual kindness week, prior to February break, students in several elementary classes made Valentines that were distributed to senior citizens living alone in the greater Newburyport area. These are now being displayed at the Cookie Jar Kitchen on Washington Street. The third grade leadership team also recently began a mittens and gloves drive for Bresnahan students that may not have access to or forget to bring their winter clothing for recess. Any donations can be dropped off at the main office. Moving on to the Mullen and the Knock. This upcoming month, the Knock-Mullen community will once again compete in their annual March Madness competition. Students will take part in daily and weekly activities, both in and outside of the classroom, to earn the illustrious Clipper Cup. The event will begin this Friday with an assembly to build excitement and community spirit. At the high school, the theater program led their yearly trip to Manhattan this past week, which gives students a taste of Broadway shows in order to enrich their own acting. They are now putting the finishing touches on the spring musical Legally Blonde, which opens on March 15th. Sixteen NHS students embarked with Dr. Hobbs and Ms. Taggart to Iceland over February break as well. This trip, led by EF Tours, showcased the unique culture and landscape of Iceland over a variety of new and exciting experiences. All went well and everyone had a wonderful time. Next Wednesday, March 6th, the Global Scholars Club will host the second International Cultural Night immediately following the Peace Prize Award Ceremony. All students are encouraged to submit any remarkable travel photos for the event's travel showcase section. Newburyport recently gained another gold medal in the field of economics. The Investment Club, supported by the NEF, competed against hundreds of other schools in the Commonwealth to enrich their earnings on the New York Stock Exchange and came out in first place. Lastly, I would like to recognize those who were recognized by the state as having made extraordinary achievements on state assessments. Congratulations to Jaden Amaral, Samuel Brickman, Harrison Gisbers, James Kench, Adelaide Malone, Lydia Mantzikas, Christopher Roland, Nadia Toth, William Tomowski, Sean Urbanshick, and Matilda Welch Malkation. That is all.
Thank you. Okay, so next we're gonna hear from our Whittier reps. Mr. Murphy, Ms. Holliday, if you'd like to just come on up here.
Up there.
Oh, actually, that's fine, you're fine there, yes.
Better back here.
Yeah, absolutely.
Brett, Murphy and I are here to talk, uh, give you an update about what's happening at Whittier. I think all of you, the whole world of the region, is aware of the fact that the vote for the new project failed and was ten communities opposed and Haverhill was the only community that voted in favor. So, at this juncture, at our last meeting, there was a unanimous vote to withdraw the statement of interest for the school project and go back essentially to the drawing board. The administration is putting together a new strategic plan to begin to look at options, alternatives, as well as what the needs of the building are. For example, there's been some conversation with Merrimack about the possibility of a sewer line and there's been conversations with Northern Essex Community College in terms of potential use for academic programs at Whittier. So, you know, I think at times when there is a negative, that there is some positive that can come out of it and you begin to step back and look around and look again at what are options for the school project. They also are working on a new communication plan, which I think is really, really needed. And we've all obviously stepped up and are starting to do that piece, too. Brett?
Whittier has just received a $390,000 anonymous grant. This is gonna, the funds are gonna be used for the building department, defense manufacturing, engineering, marine technology, and culinary equipment. This was an anonymous grant, but we very much appreciate it. Whittier is also starting the CBTE program. We have seniors from local high schools come to take part in six to eight of our vocational programs and if they choose one, then they get to go on after graduation to the 200-hour course.
For free.
They will get a certificate and this is free to the communities. In the past, it's been very successful. As of now, there's one student from Newburyport that has applied. Normally, we take three from each high school in the sending communities.
So hopefully that will increase. The other piece that is happening at Whittier is they're working on their budget for the next fiscal year and superintendent informed us at our last school committee meeting that they anticipate a 2.69% increase in the budget this year. And the committee meetings are working at this point. I sit on the policy committee and have just finished a hundred, review of 137 pages of policies and that's only halfway through. So, you know, like your school committee, we're, you know, still, you know, doing those kinds of, that kind of work, too. And Brett sits on the building grounds-
Building grounds, yes.
-committee, too, so we'll be active with that piece and as we go forward, too, in terms of what needs to happen at the school.
That'll be a busy committee coming out.
Oh, yeah.
Any questions? I actually have a question. I was trying to find an estimation and maybe this is better for Mr. Murphy, but like evaluations for the superintendent, does the school committee usually take that on? And can you talk a little bit about the process and?
Yeah, we, yes, we do. It's a yearly thing that we-
Happens every year?
Yes.
Okay. Are those posted anywhere or is there, are they discussed in the meetings or?
Uh, they're discussed in the meetings. We go, we go through the whole thing during, during the meeting after the, uh, after all the, uh, not applications, but the information submitted from each member.
Okay.
And it's analyzed and it's, it's-
Can you just talk a little bit of what the process looks like? Does everyone like fill out like a form or something?
Yeah, there's a form that we all fill out. It goes back to, you know, the administrators and it's, you know, they analyze it and they come back and tell us. We go over the whole, the whole results.
Okay. Do these, do those typically tie into a discussion around like salary increases or anything like that? Is that, is that tied into it typically or?
Uh, no, not, not in the evaluation, no.
No, okay.
Could you tell me what CBTE stands for? Do you know that, a program?
Career Vocational Technical Education.
Career?
Career Vocational Technical Education, sorry.
Oh, it's a V, not a B, I have that wrong.
Yeah, V, yes.
Is that the same as the explorations program I've heard about or is it something different?
They call it exploratory as well.
Exploratory, okay.
We used to have a, an exploratory program for younger kids, too, as well.
But it's basically, I mean, the program I'm familiar with, it sounds like this is the same thing where seniors can go and try out different things in the spring? Is it spring?
Uh, it starts around the first of April.
Okay, okay, so I am, it is the same thing as I'm making up. Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Go ahead.
Is the level service, I mean, is the percentage increase in the budget level services or extras? Or are you keeping it as-is and it's gonna cost 2.69 more?
I believe it's a bit of an increase because of the teacher contracts, from what we were told at the last meeting.
Do you guys have any plans to have more than one meeting a month? Because it seems crazy that you meet, what, 11 times a year, right?
It's worked.
Okay. I just don't see how you can do policy and stuff like that in that short of a time, right? I mean, Ms. Holliday, you've been here at this table and there twice a month and I think most school committees are twice a month.
Say, I was surprised when I was appointed to the committee that they met once a month. But they do a lot of work in committees and then come back and do quick overviews. So, it's really a lot of work happens outside of the, um, the meeting.
Good, thanks.
You're welcome.
You have a question?
Yeah, maybe you could just expand a little bit on the, I know you're still in process figuring out what the next step is on the, the building, you know, figuring out what to do about the building. You mentioned that you voted to withdraw the statement of interest. Is there any dialogue actively with the MSBA about next steps or are you?
Yes, the superintendent has been having information in. And there was some question about whether or not she could revamp the existing statement of interest and get it in in time for March 1st, which couldn't happen.
Okay.
So, um, there is some conversation that potentially, that if it comes in off-cycle, that might happen, I'm not sure at this point. Again, there's such needs across the state, it's difficult to make that determination. But right now, I think the biggest concern is trying to figure out what the major priorities are that we know, water and sewer and some of the other issues that were brought up in terms of the capital costs and what to do about that in terms of not wanting to invest a tremendous amount of money if in fact that part of the building isn't gonna be used anymore or whatever. So, there's gonna be a lot of work happening around those priorities and a strategic plan over the next couple of months. So, I would imagine that within the next few months, we'd have a new plan to, or outline to present to the school committee.
And Mr. Murphy, is, um, is the idea that you would sort of be, the building and grounds group would sort of be managing the, whatever happens next?
We'll be involved with it. You know, we, there will be someone, you know, overseeing the project.
Yeah.
Projects, advising us.
But the superintendent did say that she would like to build a brand-new school building committee that would have greater representation from across the 11 communities, which I think is really important. I think that was one of the problems that happened with this last proposal. There wasn't enough representation from all of the communities.
Anyone else?
Well, that, that seems like a positive step. I guess, just for clarity's sake, and maybe this is just an impression from your guys' position, is, it sounds like there's a, there's a plan to make a plan, essentially. A strategic plan and a communication plan, which is, which is great. Is there, is there any early indication of what the intent might be? Like, is the intent to come up with a plan to build another new facility? Is the intent to, to work on, is the intent to come up with a budget that might be manageable and digestible for the communities at large? I, I don't know if there's four or five avenues to pursue. I'm just trying to sort out what you guys might be working on with the superintendent.
Well, we're not there yet because we just had to take the vote to withdraw and we're just sort of, you know, sort of, the dust is settling after the vote. But, I mean, I think it's pretty clear that the, the plan going forward is to look at all options, you know, the fact that they've reached out to Merrimack, the fact that there's conversations happening with, you know, a community college. There's, you know, opportunity there and I would say, I just wish I had been on the committee a lot longer for the November, as I tried to stop the vote, you know, in terms of going forward. But it had to happen December 13th by the Mass School Building Authority and then you had 120 days. And, you know, all efforts to try and delay that Mass School Building Authority vote because I don't think, it was pretty clear that there wasn't support across the communities to move this forward. But unfortunately, this is where we are and we have to start over, so. But, you know, the main thing is just to be able to figure out how to keep whatever systems need to be running to support the school staying open, stay open.
I guess that's, that's part, parcel to the question. Like, is there some urgency here that the school's not gonna be functional in a period of time? And, and the second piece of that would be, you know, there's sort of, I don't wanna call it misinformation, there's just confusion. Meaning, I think some people thought or were told that there was a window to adjust and send the MSBA and you're suggesting that that was an impossibility by March 1st. That was never really on the table, I suppose.
Well, no, but, I mean, there was the possibility. I think some people felt that if a yes vote happened, you'd have between the January 30th and then the closure of the 120-day period that started December 13th.
Yep.
That there would be a period of time there where there potentially could be some adjustments to what was happening to try and save that $180 million. But, no, that didn't, that didn't happen and there wasn't, there, I think there would have been much too much in terms of adjustments- have been much too much in terms of adjustments that would have had to happen.
Okay.
To the project in order for it to be favorably reviewed by all of the other 10 communities that didn't pass it, so.
So in theory, one could in that window make an adjustment? I mean, based on your, has that ever happened? I mean, you've been through a lot of these.
Um, we did several adjustments with the Mass School Building Authority when we built the Brezner Hand, and we did the renovations at Knock Mullen, and we used, uh, CM at, at risk, construction management at risk at the Knock Mullen. Most of that had to do with, because we did really good planning with, I think, and I think Steve Burcom can attest to that as he was the chair of our building committee at that point. We did a tremendous amount of advanced planning so that by the.
Contingency plans in place?
Yeah, so that by the time we got there, we had, I think, about a 10, was it 10% contingency, Steve, on both of those contracts?
Yeah, we, that's.
Yeah, yeah, so that we were able, we had some flexibility there, but both of our contracts came in under budget. Three million for Brezner Hand and 1.9 for Knock Mullen. So, uh, we had some flexibility there, and that was where we were able to, for example, the MSBA does not fund auditoriums at a middle school level. Don't ask me why, but their rules are their rules. And, uh, we were able, because of the extra money, to be able to renovate the Knock Auditorium, which was wonderful to be able to do that. So things like that happened. So, you know, again, it's a different world now in terms of construction costs and where we are, but, um, I think the message was loud and clear to the school in terms of the work that has to happen, in terms of making adjustments to this. But I think you all heard very clearly too, that people support vocational technical education. We just have to figure out what's the best way to get it done that's cost-efficient, is not gonna hurt individual communities with, you know, that we heard, you know, in terms of their budgets. They weren't prepared for the cost of this. That was presented back in the fall.
Great, thank you for the context. And that last statement, I think everybody can agree with, that we support vocational education and wanna do it in a cost-effective manner. Is there any way to know, it sounds like it's still an impression, but when, we might know what the intent might be in terms of next steps? Whether that's a new facility, or whether that's repair?
Um, I'm sure that they're working as quickly as they can on that, and I know that the school building, uh, the original one has been disbanded, and, you know, she is not gonna keep the same OPM and other people too. So, so there's all new people coming to be involved.
At least a fresh start.
Who will have to get involved in understanding what the needs of the school are, and then move forward in terms of what needs to happen with the plan. I would imagine that within the next couple of school committee meetings, we will.
Couple of months, yeah.
Before we have, come back with a plan for you in terms of what the, they're planning.
We're still in the process of closing out what has been done with the, with the new building, or what hadn't been done with the new building.
Got it. Thank you for the clarity as we.
You're welcome.
Work through the opaque nature of it all. Thank you, appreciate it.
Is Whittier gonna do a, similar to what we're doing with the high school roof now? The advanced, what was the term?
Accelerated repair program.
Accelerated repair program? Or you're not gonna try and do that?
No, there's, it's, they're not at this point.
Why not?
It may come up.
And you can only use that for certain things. I think it's like roofs, boilers.
Sure.
Maybe one other thing. And it has to be a certain age. So it's possible they don't qualify for that.
And I can't imagine that being.
Well, I know, I mean, the priorities during the campaign at least were the wastewater treatment system.
Right.
And was the second big one?
Sprinklers?
The sprinklers.
So those may not be things that would qualify for accelerated repair.
Sprinklers are not, sprinklers are not part of the accelerated program. But I think the fact that they put in an approved plan by the MSBA for a new school, they realize that the, you know, system is beyond 50 years old, but, you know, without a plan for what's gonna happen to the school going forward, I can't imagine why we would submit something for just one small project.
Well, I mean, I don't wanna go on and on about it, because the, because the marketing behind the campaign was that you guys were one flush away from Armageddon. So I would think you'd jump on that as soon as you can. And that's great that Merrimack may be stepping up and having you tie in.
That could take a few years, because Merrimack's.
Well, everything can take, would, would have taken a few years though. I'm, I'm just curious, because I spoke to the superintendent directly about just, at the very least, replacing the two grinder pumps that they talked about, which are 12 grand each.
Right.
So you just got $400,000, right?
We know we can keep it going, but it is beyond its life expectancy.
Yeah, well, that's what they've been doing over the last several years.
Those are the types of updates I would think the next time you guys come by, if you could, please, is that. Because we're told from, you know, August until the vote, that this was gonna fail tomorrow, and it's kinda like Chicken Little. So I, I would like, I'm very curious to know what that process is going to be to fix those things.
Certainly.
Please.
And I think as we have our next school committee meeting, and, you know, we can ask about those questions, and as soon as we have information, we'll send it to you. We won't have to wait to come here. You know, we'll just keep a communication flow as, as new information comes up about what's happening in, you know, with the school.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, appreciate that. Yeah, and I just wanted to say, I think we, all, top of mind right now is the building
vote, but I think it's just helpful that you guys are, are willing to come and talk to us about everything that's happening at Whittier.
Absolutely.
And keeping, you know, and so appreciate that there's more going on than just the building. So, so I personally am just appreciative that you're coming on a monthly basis now, and, and would, will be interested in hearing all the news to share.
Well, we can say that they're doing Mean Girls, they're doing their own play too there, so.
Cool. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, we'll see you next month. It's budget time.
All right.
Did you wanna do it from there, or from here?
Oh, I'm gonna move right up.
Move up there, you got your mic, okay.
Get the mic. I'll be up here for a while, so. Lots of presentations.
Are your slides the same as what's in this packet here?
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay.
There we go. Okay, very similar to, um, uh, other budget presentations. We typically start off with more of a level service budget presentation of kind of where we're at. And basically, the level service is taking our existing programs, staffing patterns that we currently have this year, and then moving them into, um, next year's budget. So some, very similar slides from, not slides, but just talking points from our joint meeting of the city council and school committee, where we really gave, I think, that detailed overview on budgeting and how school budgets operate. So our priorities really haven't changed, um, you know, from November to now. Vision, uh, teaching and learning, people, and operations. Our budget assumptions, this is the first aspect of what we have to fund. Even before we get into, um, the, the principals and budget holders' requests, these are the two areas that have to be funded. That's our contractual obligations for the NTA, the IA, and ASME, along with non-union personnel. And then the federal and state mandates. So as we go through the presentation from now, and then the multiple presentations that we'll have, a lot of the state and federal mandates are things that we're required to do, but there's, for some of these areas, there is no funding for those areas. But we're obligated, um, to educate, you know, children in, in different aspects within our population. Level service budget, uh, just some of the budget drivers, and we've talked about these in the past, so I'm not gonna read you all of those bullet points, but really just focusing on our personnel and non-personnel. So in Newburyport, 74% of our budget is personnel. That's our support staff, teachers, uh, and to run the operations. And then, as we always say there, uh, this where we invest the most is in our personnel. And then the non-personnel expenditure is approximately 26% of the overall budget. So on this, um, page, so if in your packet, the talking points are really on page five, so you can look at this graph that's up here. Let me just get that for you all. So as we develop our level service budget, the city allocation is approximately, over the years, has been about 85% of the, um, overall budget allocations. And as we know, last year, we got a bump in chapter 70, uh, approximately for the city, approximately about a million dollars. And this year, it came back in at a million dollars plus, um, an additional $65,000. So for the last two years, our chapter 70 funding has been pretty consistent. As we look at our, uh, other reimbursements and other funding sources, it's not just the city allocations. Typically, the city allocation funds those contractual obligations for all of the unions and our personnel. But other areas of funding sources is our Medicaid reimbursement, preschool tuition, other tuition. So this is the, um, we're developing our in-district programming, and we do have a student accessing our therapeutic program, um, in choicing in, in the sense of, um, we're, you know, similar to out-of-district placement. So for that's around, I think, 40 to 50,000 for that student. And then the educatious, um, exchange program. So those are other tuitions, uh, involved for resource for us. Our school choice tuition, once again, um, that's the school choice revenue that we've talked about, and it's a big aspect of our additional funding for the district. The athletic revolving account, our building rentals, uh, transportation revolving, um, professional development grant, so that's the Swayze account. And we use $140,000 as a placeholder, but depending on the market and kind of what that account makes, we typically, the last couple of years, received over 200,000 for that, but that's geared directly, uh, for teachers only, uh, professional development throughout the district. Our special education grant, um, typically, we budget 500,000, that's up this year by 14-point percent. A Title I grant, uh, because of the changing demographics, that was down. Those are the entitlement grants that we're entitled to because of our certain demographics within the city. And then our circuit breaker reimbursement, um, which is up slightly, um, you know, for this year. So those are all of the different funding, uh, sources that go into the operational budget, other than just the city, um, allocation. So as we look at the expected or anticipated, this is our budget mark for the city appropriation. I think last year, we wound up at a 4.25 city appropriation for the final overall budget. That was one aspect of our budget last year. And right now, um, you know, with the contracts and, uh, the movement from this year to next year, we're starting off at 6.65, but when you add some of the other funding, um, sources, the overall budget, uh, is coming in at 4.12%. So as we scroll down a little bit more, so by cost center, um, I think what the school committee's gonna see this year is our non-personnel, uh, requests, and when the principals, you're not gonna see a lot of, um, staffing adds to the budget, but you'll see an increase in the non-personnel, um, adds, and we can, uh, explain that, um, for our expenses. So for the non-personnel, the personnel is really the salary increases, um, to contract obligations throughout the district. But non-personnel, as we've been talking, um, special education contracted services are up around $230,000. Facilities and operations, um, we anticipate $100,000 for that, and then utilities for an additional, approximately guessing around estimate of 50,000. School expenses, so with inflation, we anticipate, uh, increase of around 3% overall, but our principals aren't asking for more, uh, supplies, materials. And then the last piece is transportation. As we all know, we're going out to bid, um, and we're estimating a potential increase of, uh, $400,000 for that. So that's where the non-personnel expenditures are a little bit higher this year, but our personnel expenditures, um, pretty much remain constant. I also wanted to, for our newer school committee members, um, that may have not been part of the discussion in November, so I think, you know, one of the questions that, that we'll receive, uh, that I've received over the years is, well, if your enrollment is at, let's say, within the last 10 years, even longer, 20 years, within 100 students, so either 100 students high or 100 students low, where our demographics in the enrollment has stayed the same, but the needs of our students have totally changed in the sense of, um, so where, with our, uh, students, our L, our newcomers coming into the district, uh, students, uh, with disabilities has increased, our economically disadvantaged or low-income students has increased over the years. And if you go back to page one of the federal and state mandates that we're obligated to, uh, you know, be obliged to serve, these are those resources that are going into our most needy students, which makes a lot of sense. So part of some of these trends is you have the enrollment trend, and then the school choice. So, um, receiving is the darker blue of students coming into the district, and then leaving the district, um, is down below. So typically, of the 23 students that are leaving, uh, just looking at some of that data, the majority of them are about 50, a little bit more than 50%, are families that are choosing more of that traditional elementary school, um, because in Newburyport, we have the Brezner Hand, then you transition to the Mullen. Some families, uh, like that traditional, uh, elementary school model, and so at a nearby school district, they choice out, and then typically come in, uh, in the middle school. And then the other, uh, trend that we're seeing is students, um, utilizing online schooling, uh, at the high school. So some of our, I think we have 11 students that are choicing out, but they're not choicing out to another high school, they're choicing out, taking advantage of online school. So we are receiving more students coming into the district than students leaving. But this is the trend, um, and this is where, over the past few years, a lot of our resources and staffing patterns have gone, um, to address the needs of, um, certain student populations. So obviously, our newcomers and English language learners, you can see over the years how that has increased. Our demographics for low-income or economically disadvantaged percentage, uh, has been consistent the last three years. Our students with disabilities has, uh, continued to rise. And then our students, um, high needs is where you compile all of those, um, students into one, you know, one category as a high-needs percentage of total enrollment. So you can see over the years, um, these three different areas and high-needs students has increased, and our budget over the past three years has really reflected in addressing a lot of those needs. But overall, that's our, um, starting point for the level service. And as we said, next week, these percentages, obviously when the principals, um, have their, and all the budget holders have their needs, so we'll incorporate all of the asks, uh, into the preliminary budget, and then from there, that's where we do our hard work over the next few months, um, of prioritizing, uh, the needs of the district. So that's pretty much our level service at this point. Not sure if anyone has questions? Yes?
Um, when you, can you go back to the school choice numbers? So those numbers don't reflect all the kids that live in Newburyport and don't go to Newburyport Public Schools? Those, those are just kids that are choicing up someplace else?
Those are the kids that are choicing out of Newburyport to either the elementary school, um, and nearby elementary school district, and/or high school students that are choicing into that online program.
Okay. That doesn't reflect kids that go to private school or kids that?
Homeschool.
No.
Yeah. I guess the online school is technically a school, right?
It is a school. It's a new.
It's a choice into it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a new, um, yeah, it's kind of like a whole new dynamic that is, is starting to happen. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, so on your budget breakdown, in terms of funding sources, I noticed.
So on your budget breakdown, in terms of funding sources, I noticed a decrease in, in exactly what we were just talking about, the school choice tuition. Is that based on bringing things more in alignment with what actual, our actuals were for fiscal year twenty-four? Or is there any other reason that we're seeing an anticipated decrease in that?
Under school choice here?
Yes.
This is right now, what, right now, we're, we're anticipating utilizing six hundred thousand dollars. But we have the opportunity to add.
Okay, so this is, this is actually not what we're expecting in terms of revenue. It's what we're anticipating contributing to the overall.
Exactly. I mean, similar to last year, we util, we started off around like six hundred thousand as a placeholder. And we utilized more school choice funds to offset the operational budget. Yep.
And then, and then just to reiterate on the transportation item, your projection is lower. But that's also reflecting an anticipated lower overall cost.
Correct. So I think there's, there's two things that, from our budget discussions last year, that was very positive. Number one was the athletic revolving account. We utilized more money in that because we, the middle school sports, there's no user fees for those. So we utilized funding for that. And then the other, I think, important aspect that came out of the transportation subcommittee is we reduced the, you know, the two-mile mandated. We brought that down for free transportation for anyone that lived, you know, one point five miles.
Right. So we increased the amount of eligible people. But overall, we're still anticipating that our, our contribution is gonna be less.
Collection of that, correct. Yep.
But we also saw reduced ridership. So it was like two things.
Yeah, exactly. Mm-hmm.
Just to follow up on transportation, you, you said you're estimating four hundred thousand as a increase?
That's, that's a calculation, we, we have put out the bid, correct, Phil?
I would just want, yeah, come on up, or you can just use that mic right there.
Peanut gallery.
I'm just curious about when we might get some solid numbers on that?
Um, the, it was good timing because the IFB goes out tomorrow morning at nine AM. So I've already gotten three phone calls and emails. And I've notified our current provider, so it's gonna be at least four copies going out tomorrow morning. They have until March fourteenth to get it back. So I'm anticipating by the meeting of the eighteenth, we'll have an idea of where we are in terms of that. And specifically to the four hundred thousand, that's both an increase over our current costs, but also an overall increase in the special ed transportation as well. Because that has gone up quite a bit over the last couple of years. And I didn't do as great a job budgeting that number for this year that as I should have. But overall, yes, it's about, right now, four hundred thousand, and crush your fingers, it comes in less than that when we get the bids back.
Great. So we'll know soon. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hey, Phil, you've mentioned a few times, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, I'm going to, that we have too many buses or more than we need. Do you still think that we may be able to reduce the amount of buses used in the next contract?
Phil's personal opinion is, I think we could. I've had some discussions with our current provider, and they're saying that our bell times don't make it possible to do that. And I haven't really taken it much further than that. But again, if you look at thirteen buses, and right now, we are busing a little over a thousand students. We have twelve buses that do two runs and one bus that does one run. So that's expensive, you know? And most districts, you try to get three runs out of a bus. But you have to have your bell times to make it work. And I know, you know, those are the things we need to look at. But we do have in the RFP that they have to have the routing software. And so once we get the new contract in place, I wanna sit down with the vendor and go over the routing and see what we can do.
Thanks.
You know, if you, even one bus, you get rid of one bus, you know, it's, as I used to say in a pre, prior district, every time we saw a bus go down the street, that was the cost of a teacher. And now buses are even more expensive than that. You know, you're talking ninety thousand a year. No, right now, we're about seventy-five to eighty thousand a year per bus. So any, any number of buses we can reduce, it would be a savings to the district.
Thank you.
Anyone else before I go sit down?
He might as well stay up there, just in case.
All right, I'll stay here.
In terms of the receiving and sending students, is there, is there a calendar date at which you then know who's coming and going?
It's not like a specific date, but typically before the start of school, we'll know. We open up our school choice, so we try to have our school choice, I think, join, what's our deadline? June, end of June, or beginning of June?
We keep in mind the registration open until about May fifteenth or so. And if they were opening, we let it go until the last day of school.
Right.
If they were opening, and then we try to cut it off.
So we try to end our school choice right at the end of the school year, which, you know, latest date is like June thirtieth. So that will allow us to do like planning and, you know, have the principals do the schedule. So it's probably similar for other districts for their school choice, too.
So I mean, I guess just out of curiosity, do, do kids come in late? I mean, and kids leave late? I mean, over the course of the summer?
Yeah, well, so we may have someone, you know, apply for school choice, you know, they put in all their, you know, all their information. So we anticipate they're gonna be coming to the district. And all of a sudden, you know, they, they go back. Yeah. So there's, that does happen. But for, in general, like the, for planning purposes, if we have, all of our school choice are pretty close to that number in June, then that allows the principals to do the scheduling for those students in the summer. So, I mean, there are some case, you know, some cases that, that happen over the summer. But we try to have our school choice numbers completed before we leave for the break.
That's great. Yeah, cuz you, I mean, just percentage-wise, you had a big jump between twenty-two and twenty-three. So it'd be nice to know if that was not.
Right. Yep.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're very, very welcome. All right.
Any other budget questions? All right, thank you. I think you stay right there.
I am, and that's why we're using the iPad and we can just pull up the next presentation. So I think our next presentation is kinda to give a lot more detail on the job descriptions that you all received. And then the, kind of the overview of the reorganization and reallocation to really support our special education programming and the student pupil services. So really gonna kind of go over detail on this. And I think for us, what's hard is, I think, as we move forward on some of these more detailed presentations, it's almost if we sent out a lot of the information without any context behind it, I think you probably all would have given me like thirty emails over the, over the weekend. So I think it's, it will probably be easier in the future when we have bigger presentations. If I go through the entire presentation and then, you know, working with the vice chair or the mayor, then we could have follow-up questions. So this is really all of the talking points and the rationale behind everything, just to try to, to, to help everyone out. And kinda, I brought more of a, a little background on kinda our process over the years since I've been here as the superintendent. So I think every year, when we start to develop our budget, we reallocate, I mean, I've said this, the mayor's been here forever, Mr. Callan's been forever. We talk about reallocating, taking a look at our programs, you know, changing things to meet the needs every year of our students. So when I got here in two thousand eighteen, and this won't be a long history lesson, cuz I know it's gonna be a long night. But one of the, the pieces is part of my entry plan is I recognized, as I came in, and that was a year of negotiations, that there was no teacher leadership positions throughout the district. Although they were in the contract, in stipended positions. But there was, none of our teachers or teaching staff took advantage of any of those teacher leadership positions. So coming into the district, I think the first thing we did that was really, really important, one is to build trust and work on culture. And two, during my first year coming into the district, that was a negotiation year, to really highlight and work with the teachers on how important teacher leadership is in the district. So taking your teacher leaders, taking teachers, giving them leadership opportunities within the organization. You wanna build capacity within. Those are your future administrators, future principals, future superintendents. And we just really wanted to have that path. So part of that, we established during that, my first year, working with our teachers' union, we brought back a lot of these teacher leadership positions, the curriculum leaders, the instructional leaders. And what that helped us do is to develop and strengthen our collaboration and connections with our teacher union, but also with the IA union and ASME union. So really taking that collaborative approach. So going into my second year, it was really important, we had a couple of important initiatives. One, it's our skills-based teaching and learning, where those teacher leaders took leadership roles and almost trained the facilitator. So they were facilitating a lot of this. And then also our foundations at the Brezner Hand, where these also teacher leaders in all these different capacity. We had tons of momentum moving forward. We were doing a lot of great instructional practices. And then that March, you know, thirteenth, that's when the call went out that we were gonna take a break for two weeks until this pandemic thing went away. But it didn't. So that was, as we all know, we hit the pandemic. And I just, part of our strategic planning that came out of, part of that, that came out of the silver lining in that was the ability for all of us to collaborate. So we were one of the few districts, because of the relationships we have with the unions, to actually work on plans without having to collective bargain all of those things. So the teachers and the IAs and all of us came together. And we had some great collaboration in opening up our schools. The other piece that was really important for that is during the pandemic, so teaching and learning was always, is always at the head of that. But there was two people, like Steve Burcom and Kathy Ricchio, within the district became the priorities during that school year. So it goes back to the Amy Webb's that cone, where we talk about tactics and having the flexibility and ability to adjust of what's happening in front of us now as an organization. And that's a prime example. We had to adjust and rethink. And Steve and Kathy Ricchio and Health Services Buildings became the number one priority during that year. So coming out of COVID, we did a, strengthened our literacy support, provide the assistant superintendent with literacy coordinator, increased interventionists to really assist with the, the learning as our students were coming back for full day. And that's where we started doing our strategic planning. Part of that also, of those discussions, came out of, we need more, better communication. And that's where we developed our Director of Communications and Instructional Technology position within central office. And that position wasn't just added, we consolidated another district-wide position. It was a STEM coordinator that we re, I guess, consolidated that position and created this new position of Director of Communications, because that was the need of the district at the time. And then the next year, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, to strengthen our human resource department, feedback from the three unions and the administrative team led to the creation of a Director of Human Resources. Faced with post-pandemic staffing concerns and recognizing the importance of establishing those internal procedures and staff retention and all of those things, as we did our strategic plan, that position just seemed key at the time and is very, very beneficial. So very similar process that we followed this year. So with the hiring of a new, or the process to hire a new Director of Pupil Services, we received a lot of feedback from parents, the community, we received a lot of feedback from staff. And really taking a hard look at our Student Services and Special Education Department, we fully recognize that we need to provide some more support in that department. So this reorganization that we'll talk through tonight and show you with our organizational chart, really, I think, addresses the concerns of that department. At the same time, also benefits the entire district. So part of that, this reorganization, as I scroll through, will allow case management, really having our team facilitators, the people that are running those meetings, focused on the students and the families that they're working with along with the team. It's gonna provide program supervision and program development on both areas, special education development and social emotional learning in our therapeutic development. It's gonna help us vertically align the social emotional supports district-wide. And then it also is gonna address community development, CPAC, and allow the director to do more within the community. The teaching and learning aspect, it creates a sustainable structure that allows us to continue to move forward with the portrait of a graduate vision and use our resources to meet the student needs. And then also, this reorg will provide some financial and human resources to the business department, mainly for the business department. So some of the proposed changes, and I'm not gonna go through all of these, cuz you have them in front of you. When I go through the organizational charts, I think it'll be a lot clearer also. So our Student Services and Special Education, so as we said, we're eliminating the behavioral health coordinator position. And we're gonna reallocate that position as one of the program supervisors that will fall under our Director of Student Services. And then we're also redefining our team facilitation leaders to team facilitators, which will be teacher positions without any supervisory duties. We're looking to move our English language and homeless and foster care program supervision under the Student Service Department. And then our teaching and learning aspects. So we're creating a new position of the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning by merging the Assistant Superintendent and Director of Communications and Instructional Technology positions. Taking two of those ad, central office positions, merge them as one. That will establish our teaching and learning professional development team. So really, that Assistant Superintendent in, that's going to be overseeing teaching and learning, will really have the ability just to focus on the teaching and learning and development those academic teams. It will help us to increase focus from working with the building principals. The move, a supervision of the English language and homeless and foster care programs. So as we all know, for our newcomers coming in, one of the big aspects is the transition planning for them and provide them that support and wraparound services. So it fits under that social emotional learning program supervisor. And then just to scroll down some more, you can see the, the difference. I don't wanna keep reading you all these different bullets. But under three, the finance and human resources. So we have currently a point-five payroll clerk that we're looking to pull out of the union. And that will provide the financial analysis. So the aspect of that is for them to assist with negotiations in some human, you know, personnel areas. And that's why they would have to be pulled out of the union because they couldn't be part of the bargaining unit and deal with some of those confidential items. So the benefits, within, going back to the importance of developing teacher leadership, within our whole organization, there are many teacher leaders and many teachers that we feel will step into some of these roles. So the cost savings, we feel could be significant. I'll have a better understanding once, you know, people move into these different roles. It's gonna enhance the support for special education. And it helps clarify roles and responsibilities for all of those people. So those are the talking points. But I think it might be easier to show the organizational charts, because then you can see where the support. So this is our current structure. And I wanna make sure I get it all, everyone's on there, perfect. So as you can see, you, we have the superintendent, let me just make sure I can, we have our superintendent. Then you have underneath the four areas, and then you have central office personnel. So we're looking of combining the Assistant Superintendent and the Director of Communications, combining that position. And at the same time, as I said earlier, taking this behavioral health, removing that and reallocating that in one of those program coordinators. And then within removing that and reallocating that in one of those program coordinators. And then within our current structure, you have that payroll clerk, that .5 is in this area under the current structure. So as we look to the reallocation under Central Office, you have the superintendent, as you can see, the new position, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. And we've pulled a lot of those, we divvied up some of those different areas, but they'd be able to focus on the instruction, curriculum instruction assessment, they would continue with the entitlement grants, they would pick up some of the communication responsibility, the instructional technology ties directly into the curriculum, and then just strategic, and then the budget. So on this side, because of the Behavioral Health Coordinator being reallocated, that creates funding for the program supervisor and then the NTA team facilitators. And then here you have the financial analysis that's pulled out of the union, so that .5 funding is already in the, in place of that. So with these changes, what really this impacts is our Director of Pupil Services. So right now, this is our current Director of Pupil Services, and right now it's Deb O'Connor. And so if you look at this schematic and you look at this chart, right now you have team facilitators, so these three are administrators. So not only are they running the team meetings, but they're also doing all the teacher observations, and they're also required or trying to oversee the different programmings throughout the district. Over here, the former Behavioral Health Coordinator is kind of off on their own, doing the best they can on the therapeutic programs, okay? And then works with the board, behavior analysis. So when you look at this existing chart, you can see when we have 450 families that are students who are on IEPs, we've had an increase in 504s in dealing with students that need additional support. It's just not a structure that's built for success. This may have worked 10 years ago, but when we're talking every year about the increase of social emotional issues for our students, and we're talking about an increase of our students with disabilities, and we're talking about an increase of our newcomers, it makes sense to have that under one department. So now, you can see the departments kind of split into two areas. So you have your Director of Student Services that can work on the vision, can work on the budget, can work on compliance, can work on the legal issues, can actually focus on CPAC and community relationship building. At the same time, the program supervisor is an administrator. So this program supervisor's not running team meetings. This program supervisor now has the time to go into these programs and provide support, provide, you know, oversight, provide supervision, provide visioning. And then the team facilitator are now staff members, and their only job is to run the team meetings. And now, by having them focus not only just on the team meetings, by focusing on the students and the families and the parents as a direct liaison, that's their job, is to not only run the team meetings, but to really be the liaison working with the families. The other piece here too, is on this side, this is another administrator, and then this program administrator can focus on the same thing, but just on the therapeutic side, focus on the Learning Center, the Bridge Program, focus on the homeless and foster care, and then focus on the English learners, and really provide those wraparound services for the students that don't need any academic support, but just might need transition into Newburyport. The other piece is the L students that do need more support, that may need to be tested for, you know, if there's a learning disability, they're already in this department. So they're already familiar with this department, and they're already familiar, these professionals, the 504 Quinnas, are all working together. And it's almost like they, it's a catchhold in the sense that none of the students will kind of fall behind. So this is, I think, a great plan that's cost-effective, and it really shifts a lot of the supervision, a lot of the support into our Special Education Director of Student Services. And, you know, we're kind of excited, you know, to, to roll this out. Talking to the teachers, you know, as we said, within this department and within the district, we feel like a lot of our teachers will be moving and stepping in and interested in applying for some of these jobs. So although you've received the job description, this is how it all kind of fits. So you can see from what we have currently in pupil services structure to what we're recommending, you can just see the layers of support that should address a lot of the needs that we've heard through our parents and, you know, faculty and support staff. And I think I covered all of my talking points. But that's why I'm saying, if I think if I sent this out to all you guys over the weekend without the context behind it, you might have had a lot of questions. So I'm ready for questions now. Yes?
Go ahead.
Really?
Really.
I just want to address, if everybody doesn't mind, Member Higgins' email that she sent to all of us.
Correct.
So can I just read out the one section she was concerned about?
Yeah, the L section, yeah.
Yeah. If I could see it, that would be great. Concerns are minor revisions in the job descriptions. It's unclear whether the scope of work for one of the assistant director positions includes programming for ELE. One of the JD includes a reference to ELLs, however, this JD does not include job description, everybody?
Yep.
Does not include a requirement for an ESL license, nor does any of the competencies refer to expertise in language acquisition, programming for multilingual learners, or data-driven instructional strategies for MLLs. This would be a big job. ELL programming sped academics, so that could be carefully considered. You read it, I'm sure, if you don't mind addressing her concerns, that'd be great.
Yeah, so.
Can I just ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
Because it's related to that.
Yep.
And I'm just wondering if this is an error. In the job descriptions that you sent us, L responsibilities are listed in the, under the program, sped program supervisor for academic programs?
Yeah, that should be on the other side, yeah.
So that was an error?
That is an error on that job description.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, yes. So, yeah, so as part of this, so we have a certified L team coordinator here. So on this right here is exactly what she's talking about, but all administrators are SEL certified. So it's, it's, it's basically the same, it's really the same programming that we're going to be offering.
Is that error in the description going to affect the possible vote?
I don't think so, because we're just, we're moving the, it should be, the L should be under the program supervisor for social emotional.
So if we end up voting, is the motion going to include that?
And the, and the other piece for the job descriptions too, is, that's a general sense of the duties, but in there, there's, you know, the superintendent can designate, you know, other additional jobs. So for, for Central Office, this just gives them, all of these positions just gives them an idea of what the general job is. Like, for example, if, you know, we're folding MCAS letters that are going to go out, you know, our people will come running over to us, say, Sean, it doesn't say I should be folding letters, it's not my job description, you know what I mean?
Do you really have a letter folding machine?
We should get one, we don't have one though. But what I'm saying is, so, so that, the general job description is kind of the, you know, that piece. So it's not, you're not going to write a job description, you may have to mail things, you may have to do this, you may have to serve lunch, you know?
No, I understand. It's just that since there was a, ignore this error, and we've never done this before.
I know.
Not voted on a thing, then I think that whatever the motion is, it includes something about how they're fluid in a way.
I mean, my recommendation would be for, you know, for tonight, so I kind of gave you all the overview. If we want a, part of that review is to review, right, the job descriptions. And then my recommendation is if, you know, we can review them tonight, have some dialogue. And then Monday's meeting, which is next week, we could do the approval with the amended suggestions, if that makes sense.
Right, I forgot we were meeting that closely.
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I appreciate all the detail. I guess I just had a little bit of question on the, some of the historical view, maybe, and this isn't a new position, but it's, it's mentioned, which is the Literacy Coordinator, which I think is, is going to be, is an existing position, although you mentioned, you mentioned it being created in 2021 and 2022, and I guess I, I first wanted just an explanation of that, because I was under the understanding we had a literacy coordinator.
We did. So we had, it was Emily Russen that ended up leaving the district. So we added the, like, district-wide literacy coordinator for that position.
Okay. And, and I don't know if we've seen the job description for that one. That might be helpful to see what that literacy coordinator position is. It's mentioned a few times. Anyway, I can ask you through that, on the side. And then, so then I guess, just to clarify, what were my other notes? When was the Behavioral Health Coordinator position created?
That was coming out of COVID, so 2000, I want to say 20, coming 21.
I think it was on here. Okay, and I didn't see it, I didn't see it as a created position, so that's why I was wondering. I thought that's, I thought that was, was true.
No, it's not a new, it wouldn't be part of this job description.
I know, I know. Yeah, I understand. Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I would just reiterate that what your plan makes sense to me. I think having all these materials sent to us would be great, and posted online, so people who are following along at home.
Yes.
Know what's happening. I understand your overall objectives, I think just clarity on what's a new position, what's a merged position with a just slightly revised version of the job description. And just to clarify our role, we do have to vote as a group on creation of new positions. We should vote if you're going to eliminate a position, but you can hold positions and just not fill them. So we wouldn't necessarily have to vote to eliminate those positions unless you're actually going to eliminate the position. So I mean, I, I can see some value in keeping positions that you're not going to fill, but it gets confusing. And I think I also want to just clarify that we use a lot of different words to describe positions, but the intent is that the school committee still has the appointment authority over certain positions. And whatever their title is, our appointment authority, again, at the recommendation of the, of the superintendent, typically, we would consent to that approval or that recommendation, would be the associate or assistant superintendents. So no matter when, how many words you put on the end of it, still is assistant superintendent position, school business administrator, the administrator of special ed, which we call the Director of Pupil Services now, but that is really the same position from a statewide understanding. And then there's a few other areas that we also have some approval authority over. So I just think that it's good for the committee to keep that in mind, that some of these positions that we're talking about are ones that we have a role also in filling. But others, you know, are just more about, they, they're going to exist in the district, and we have the ability, we have the, we are supposed to approve new, new positions and changes to existing positions. Anyway, it's more commentary than question.
Can I just ask a process question? To, I guess, this is more to the committee. So I just, I know on the city side, when any kind of, of reorgs happen, it's, it's a pretty big process, and it's a timely process and a public process. Is there any thought that we should maybe have a public forum where, where the superintendent can kind of go through what he's thinking and actually, I know this isn't quite the same, right? Because like in a public forum, people can get up and ask questions, not just a public comment. I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. I just don't know. This seems really significant, and I would be very uncomfortable taking a vote on any of this tonight, and I'm actually be, be very uncomfortable taking a vote on Monday. It's just, it's just too quick. This is just like, this is a huge undertaking. And again, the fact that we haven't been voting on new positions for so long, or like, and I've been here seven years, this is the first time I've seen a job description in seven years, except for the superintendent that we, that we hired. So, I mean, to me, that's all really concerning, and I don't know if process-wise, we should start going back and maybe making up for lost time, looking at some of these things. Like, for example, you know, for me, HR is a huge deal, but I would love to see, you know, the HR and financial analyst, the director position and the HR position, and I'd like to see all those job descriptions really, and have a better understanding of what the HR office is doing and how they're interacting with the HR office at, at the city level. You know, the assistant superintendent piece for teaching and learning, I mean, I, I guess this, this question is, is for Superintendent Gallagher, like, have you seen, and I, I know you work quite, quite closely with a lot of different superintendents on the North Shore, have you seen any kind of model like this? Because, I mean, I've never seen technology thrown under teaching and learning in, in this, in this setup. So I'm just wondering, it just seems like we're adding a lot of, of duties to something, and I just haven't heard a whole lot talked about curriculum and instruction tonight when talking about all these pieces. And I think that's another thing that Dr. Higgins was mentioning and concerned about, is just, you know, we definitely have some areas that we want to keep working on in the district. So how does this, this new setup get us, I guess, get us to where we want to go?
I, I actually think the.
Particularly early literacy.
Yeah, I think, I think this new setup is actually creates more opportunity, takes stuff off of the plate to have the assistant superintendent really focus on the early literacy. So yeah, you've pulled out L, you know, as I said, you pulled out, let's see, teacher certification, you pulled out mentoring, you pulled out Ls, overseeing Ls, you pulled out homeless, you pulled out foster care. So right now, that assistant superintendent can focus solely on teaching and learning throughout the district, and really have more of a, I guess, a focus area on a lot of the academic programs. So you're freeing up more time.
So, so right now, do the technology operations and instruction integrators, are they, are those already in place, and do they report to?
They were under the Director of Communications, correct?
Okay.
So it's all instructional technology, which technically, that the tech integrators would fall under the Assistant Superintendent, teaching and learning.
So that, that was a question that emerged early. Is, is this a unicorn that exists that's a technical, technology expert and a literacy expert? I mean, I, I guess that's, that's just a question.
Yeah, it's a, well, it's instructional, so the, the instructional technology piece has a direct impact on the curriculum instruction and assessment.
Okay.
So it's, it should be, it should be under the assistant superintendents.
So you intimated that you were, and it's, it's a good inclination, that, that some of these folks could be internal. Is that?
Many of them.
Yeah. And, and the thought is that that skill set exists?
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, you have, the other, the other piece is, over the years, we built up our technology, like the tech integrators who are working on the instructional practices with teachers and students. So that whole department would fall under the teaching and learning.
Just to cycle back on Ms. Walker's, I found it confusing, so excuse me if I'm catching up on the parlance, you know, is, is this just a semantic thing, where in some cases we call it Director of Pupil Services, in other cases we call it Director of Student Services, in other cases it's just colloquial, we refer to.
We've always advertised it as Director of, I mean, as Director of Pupil Services because it encompasses all, all kids. So all of those different programs, kids. So some districts keep it as Director of Pupil Services, some districts have it as Director of Student Services.
So they do have different connotations.
It does. So when you have Director of Pupil Services, it covers all of those different elements. Versus the Director of Special Education is just focused on the special education.
Got it, okay. No, that's really helpful. So the new one would be Director of Student Services?
Director, right now, we have it as, we advertise the pupil services, but if we ever, if we switch it to student service. ever, if we switch it to student services, it's the same thing. So it cover, you know what I mean? When you have a director of just special education, in some districts, that's all they focus on is the special education piece.
It's the same license, Sean.
Same licensure.
I just wanted to follow up on the mayor's concern. I mean, I, I don't really have that concern about the reorganization. I mean, I think, you know, we, we are giving, having an opportunity right now to discuss the specific position descriptions, which falls within our purview. But I, I kind of think the way the schools are run really falls under the superintendent's purview. And, and if, I think if, you know, it's great to have this collaboration, it affects the budget, so it's, it's something we should be a part of the discussion. But I don't really think that we need to be overseeing every single aspect of the org chart. I think it's good for us to understand where people fit in the org chart, but I don't know that it's our purview to get into a big, like, reconsolidation discussion. And, you know, I, I think it's a little bit different than like a city-level department. That's just my perspective. A little different than like a department reorganization at the city level. That, that being said, I think it's, it is helpful to get this picture of how different positions fit and relate to each other and how the different, you know, job descriptions will, will build off each other and so forth. So I'm, I'm definitely supportive of further conversation. And if we want to have a larger, you know, a little bit longer timeframe so that we can get some more public input or, or have, have some public presentations, because particularly as it impacts the budget. But I, ultimately, I would defer to, personally would defer to the superintendent on how best to organize the schools and the running of the schools.
I think you already said in terms of the budget impact, you're anticipating savings.
Significant.
Okay, so.
And the other piece too is, remember, when I first came in, we had one assistant superintendent in charge of everything. And then we had, so there was no central office support to support, as we said, we're investing in our people, was very minimal. So utilizing, you know, my sixth year and every year, you know, reallocating and looking at the needs of the district, that's, I think I've done a pretty good job at doing that. But there, there was not a, you know, HR, there was, there was technology. Part of the instructional technology position is what we heard from people. So these, these positions, this reallocation is, you know, from the focus groups, from the parents saying, hey, you need to address this. And we've done that over the past six years. The other piece of the instructional technology piece that was very important for us was our one-to-one iPad program. So that was instrumental of the work that went into that. You know, we rolled out, one of the few districts in the Commonwealth have at least their own, you know, Mac, Apple program or iPad program. And the feedback and the complaints from the district was zero. So now that we have this program up and running, now that we've added the tech integrators, so now you look at the director of communications and technology position, it's, it's kind of served its purpose right now. So we can take the instructional technology piece, bring it under the umbrella of the assistant superintendent of teaching and learning, and then at that point, utilize our HR because, you know, our assistant superintendent is writing competitive grants, is, you know, doing licensure, is doing professional development. So pulling a lot of those things off of the assistant superintendent of teacher and learning just does the, just does the same thing. It allows them to focus purely on the academics as we delegated some of those other responsibilities to the HR side, to the special ed side. So as I said, I think the feedback from people since, you know, August to now is, is what we actually listen to. So looking at, you know, what are we going to do for special education? How are we going to support these families? This plan directly does that, adds more support, more resources in our most needy population, but at the same time allows us to continue to move the district forward. So, you know, we, we don't have paths that we just throw plans together and say, see what happens. There's been a lot of thought, a lot of, you know, input and, and just really developing this, that I feel it, it does. It addresses, it allows us to continue to move forward with our strategic planning, but it also really addresses, I'm really excited because I think it really addresses the needs of the district under that department. We're going to be able to provide support for our most needy students, students with learning disabilities, students that have social, emotional support they need, and then also our newcomers coming into the, into our district. So that's, that's what I got.
And I would just like to add, I, I absolutely agree with focusing on that objective, that that, the objectives you outlined, I think makes sense to me, particularly the student services and special education support. It's definitely something that came up in our discussion and our, in our, around the hiring of the new director and that, you know, it's not just the person in that position, it's also the support they have in the, in the district. And I hope the families of special education, the special education families are, are listening to this, that, that we're trying to, within, within a constrained budget, trying to allocate some of the budget to this specific need. And, and I think, you know, we may have to cut more, we'll see, but, but I think devoting whatever resources we have to that specific, to address that specific need in this year is an important thing to do. And it's, it's actually kind of interesting how you organize this because you do see how we've had to be, and you, you know, you've been the lead behind most of these changes. We've had to be flexible every year, depending on what the, the current strategic plan and objectives were and our budget priorities. So, you know, we do have to move positions around from one year to the next. And sometimes we consolidate and sometimes, you know, and I, I guess, some people think consistency is good. I guess, I don't necessarily think that we have to be consistent all the time. I think it's just clear, it's good to be clear what our objectives are by doing this. I also think, you know, you can have people, but you can also have the, at the leadership level, you just need a leader in, in a role that can enable the people under them to do the right things. And if you have an assistant superintendent for teaching and learning, that, if that job description sounds a little too high in the sky, I, to me, it's a, it's a leadership, ultimately, it's a leadership position. And that person has to be able, has to have the right qualities to lead the folks under them. And those folks are the ones who have the real critical skills for doing the day-to-day.
Expertise.
And the expertise, it's the, at the leadership level, it takes a kind of a different skillset.
And, and I think the other piece of this plan, it, it's almost, it creates, you build an incapacity. So let's just say the director of pupil services moves on. You now have created two positions. So you build them within, so you're not like out having the, you know, advertise outside and some newcomer comes in. You have people that know the families, know the system, that may be ready to step up and take that leadership role. So part of, I think part of my responsibility as superintendent and what I think I take great pride in is developing that teacher leadership capacity. Some of these teacher leaders take on a leadership role, then they take on administrative role, and then eventually they'll take on, you know, central office roles. And then you're, within your organization, you're always sustaining excellence. So it's not new people coming in with new ideas. It's the same people that are familiar with the community, familiar with these families and familiar with Newberry Port. So that's, that's also another aspect of this, is to make sure we have built up leadership in those, in that department that can take the torch when someone moves on. Someone can take my torch pretty soon. Couple of years, maybe.
So if we're okay to wrap up the discussion, I'm, I would favor voting on this on March 18th, in part because March 4th is pretty stacked at this point. But that also gives us time, as you said, to review things, ask further questions, make sure all these just job descriptions are accurate. Member Higgins will be back. And then all this supporting material could be in the packet for the 18th. So.
Yeah, and I think it's, the earlier we, we can move forward, it just allows us budgetary, like then I'll, I'll start, you know what I mean? We, we'll have to advertise some of these positions, you know, within district and out of district. But then it will give us a better understanding how much the cost saving is at. So it's probably critical on some of the, the budget stuff. So.
I feel more comfortable with the March 18th deadline myself, but I know it puts you back a little bit.
We could wait till March 18th. I think that would be.
Yeah, I like that. And I, I want to just, again, I try to do this every day at the city level. But I mean, I am for reorganizations and constantly looking to do things better. But I do think because special ed's been such a touchy subject, I think just a lot more handholding and like really talking about what this will look like for those families, particularly who are still struggling with, you know, the new hire we just made or just the process or whatnot. But like this, I think could help if it's explained, you know, the right way. So that's why, that's why I just, I just brought that up.
Thank you. All right.
Moving on.
Do you want to sit down or?
No, I'm, we're going to keep going.
Security upgrade payment program.
That's right. It's a-
Why did we put so many things on this agenda?
Who's in charge of the agenda?
Who's in charge of doing the agenda?
I know.
And then we have, you walked into that one.
I know, I do.
The capital plan's next. Steve, Steve's waiting in the wings back there.
Waiting patiently.
He can do the Cliff's End version of that, right? We've seen this before.
So.
It's new stuff.
Yeah, we're not voting on it.
Going to go through the, the, as part of, as you all know, the, we talked about this and it's been in the Friday memos, the superintendent memos, really want to, we've been focusing on upgrades of, we started upgrading the high school camera system in the beginning of the year, and then we added some cameras to the NOC. But then we just really started looking at school safety as a whole and working with the company and really just prioritizing school safety for the entire district. So, long story short, working with Fracata, who's the security company that did some work with us, having, and working with Steve Burcom, having them give us a proposal of an entire district upgrade of the security system and all of that. So they gave us that proposal and part of that is a seven-year payment plan. And that's why when we get to the, the vote and, and all of that, that's why this is really on your agenda. Because anything more than three years needs a vote of the school committee, along with the, I think, city council. But we have our attorneys taking a look at that. But let me go through what we're talking about for everybody. So part of this plan is we would upgrade the security upgrades at the Brezlinian. So that would include converting the 63 doors to vertica control access. So basically what that does with the advancement of technology is to put locks on all the doors that in case of an emergency, case of an intruder, in case of anything like that, the principals and administrators, along with the police, would have the ability to lock every door in that school through their cell phone. So let's say there's an emergency happening, they could lock the doors through the cell phone. The other piece of that is upgrading the existing cameras. So that would be 19 cameras to be upgraded. That would be adding eight exterior multiple, multiple sensors to be added, upgrading the existing intercom system in the Brez, developing the desk station security upgrades in the main room, and then alarm monitoring and all the cameras and all the doors. So let's just say someone goes to the Brez and they open up a door in the back, that would be alarmed and an alarm would go off. So the administration would know someone's coming into the building unauthorized. That could also be sent to the police. So the police would have full access to all of our security systems. The other piece is the guest management at the main office. So similar to the Raptor system that we have in the buildings, this is a similar guest management that would tie in to the overall security system. So you would know, you know, people in the building, there's a lot of, I don't want to get into a lot of the details of the security, but you would know people in your building, if there was an issue, outside issue, you would be able to pull those people up. So similar upgrades to the NOC Mullen School. So I won't read you all of them, but you, same thing, converting the doors to access control, upgrading 43 cameras in the NOC. They've already upgraded 12 interior dome cameras were already installed, upgrading the intercoms, the desk station at the NOC, the Mullen and central office, and then alarm monitoring for all cameras, along with the doors. And then similar thing, guest management for everyone who comes in the main office or any office in the building, that would be tied into the security system. So Newberry Port, as we already said, the high school had a lot of work that's been done through ESER. And so there's multiple camera system upgrades have already been completed there. The one aspect for us would be converting their 14 doors for the access control. And then they would also get the alarm monitoring on all cameras and doors and guest management at, at the main office. So some key elements of this plan, and the only way we could do this and not, you know, it's been on the capital improvement plan, I think going through the city. But we figured, we really, with some of the incidents that have been happened throughout the country, security needs to be a top priority. So here are some of the key elements of our plan. So we're looking to utilize the remainder of the ESER3 funds and put like a down payment. Then we enter a seven-year plan, payment plan with Vantage Financial. So that's where our attorneys and their attorneys are looking at the agreement. So what we would do is we would earmark $80,000 to $100,000 of school choice funds per year for the seven years to pay for the security upgrades. And then the cost of the overall project includes a 10-year licensing fee, software and updates. So basically, there's a 10-year warranty on all of this equipment. So if something breaks 10 years from now, or nine and a half years from now, it gets automatically replaced. And Steve Burcom has a lot of experience in working with different security vendors. This company is phenomenal. If something breaks down or a camera's not working, we'll get a new camera the next day. And then all of the software and all of the work is behind, is behind the scenes. It's, it's on the internet and all of that. So the existing camera system, the, the old one, everything is wired and then you have to replace the camera and the wires. So this really, all of the work is on the backend of this. So here are some of the benefits of what we're trying to do. So the funding source would not impact future operational budgets because it would come out of our school choice revolving account. The best part of this is once the agreement is signed and, you know, we do all of our checklist, they'll come out and they'll install all of these upgrades all at once in every single building. So it's not like a phased-in plan. It's not like, oh, Brez will get their security upgrades next year. They will do it within a month, once they get the dates. And they'll do the entire district. The cameras are high resolution with multiple security elements in there. You know, all the way to narrowing down on a license plate that's out in High Street. It's that high definition. So if there was something that we really needed to find or see, all of those types of things, you know, the security, it's clear. And once again, it would be shared with the police. Door locks, as I said, can be accessed by the computer and/or cell phone of administrators. And then the Newberry Port Police Department has full access to the security upgrades. So this is why I'm really, I think we really need to do this. We've also been adding district-wide some ballistic film to some of the windows and things like that throughout the district. So we're also adding that security currently. But if we move forward with this plan, then we'll have, like I said, high-tech security in all of our buildings. It'll be done at once. And speaking with Phil Littlehale, he's very com- And speaking with Phil Littlehale, he's very comfortable with allocating or earmarking school, school choice funds per year to finish off the payments, so. And as I said, that's the only way I think our school district could afford it, is to break this down to a seven, that's the max, is a seven-year plan. And as we all know, with technology and, and building costs, these, these things are probably just gonna be more expensive. So you know what, what the other pieces that I like is, we'll have the most updated security system even 10 years from now, because they're gonna continue, part of that payment plan and part of the agreement is they're gonna continue to upgrade with the new technology. So it's not like your system, what's happening now is our system's out of date and not, not, not usable, or not as usable as this system, so. How'd I do, Steve Berkholm, he's back there, you want to start heading up, because you're doing capital plan next? Yes?
So can you clarify what you need from us tonight? I don't think this is related to our policies at all. It's just, what are the legal, what was the legal guidance?
Did you see what's, there's a.
It's in the packet.
Page in the packet.
Three-hour, three-year contract.
Right.
Where is the page in the packet, I did not see that.
That's right.
Uh, page 31 is where.
After the budget, yeah.
So basically, the, from our attorneys, as she's looking at.
So it's, there's some information from Mass General Law here.
Correct.
Because it's more than a three-year contract, we need to vote. And then I think below that is something from our policy, DJA purchasing authority.
I'm not finding this in the packet, so let me find it.
Yeah, I think Joanne found the procurement.
Honestly, it's 31 through 33.
We have a hot copy for you, Ms. Walker.
So if you look at DJA, the highlighted part says, "The purchase of items and services within the cost center appropriation requires no further committee approval, except when by law."
Right, except when by law, right.
Or by committee policy, which is.
We would have to refer to this policy, because it's not applicable. Right, okay.
We tried.
So, so the law is that, what is, I'm sorry, I'm still not finding this. Oh, there we go, okay. Oh, and Joanne.
I think it's in there, yeah.
Yeah, it's just a packet, a section of Mass General Law.
So it's just a simple majority vote?
Correct, because it's longer than three years.
The vote would be that we are enable, we are committing the district to a contract of seven years?
I have a written motion for this one that I have to read.
Okay.
So if you're comfortable, I can go ahead and read it, and then we can have some discussion about it.
I think that would be great.
Okay. All right. So I'll make the motion to enter into lease agreement number NEW 022124 with Vantage Financial, and to authorize Superintendent Sean Gallagher to execute such lease agreement and all related documents, including without limitation and all subsequent schedules and/or addenda as required by such lease for and on behalf of the district, and to authorize Mayor Sean Riordan, School Committee Chair, to execute the required certificate of incumbency in connection with such lease agreement.
Second.
Discussion.
So my question is, the source of the funds is not part of the vote, right?
Correct.
Okay. So what's our balance right now in the school choice account?
So Phil, what's our school choice balance right now?
Wait, Phil, can you come up to the microphone, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I guess the question is, what's, what's in our account, and do we feel comfortable every year? Because we're putting a significant amount.
We're basically.
If, if I could.
Yeah.
I just want to clarify one thing. We are using school choice for part of it. We also currently have a four-year lease for computer equipment that is, this is the last year, so we're repurposing that $54,000 that we've been paying for the last four years as also part of the funding for this lease. So it'd really be about no more than $60,000 a year maybe coming out of school choice. And right now, our balance is still running about $500,000 to $600,000, because remember, we've got 80-odd students coming in this year, and we've been getting just slightly less than $50,000 a month coming in, so that's $600,000 coming in.
Yeah.
We plan to use $600,000 this year, so that means our balance that we've been carrying is still there. So, it's a long way of saying, having spoken with the superintendent, I am comfortable that we will have the funding there for the next seven years to cover this lease. And I agree with the superintendent, it's an, it's an ideal opportunity for us to get this done, to avoid what I call Franken system, which is, you know, have 14 different security systems, because you do it over 10 years.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I, I am supportive of this, I just want to clarify that we are committing two funds that, if for some reason the school choice fund account goes away, or we have to use it for something else, we are still obligated to pay for this, it's not just gonna, I mean, you did say it's not gonna impact the operational budget, which is right, if, if we have school choice. But if we can't use school choice, we still have to pay this money.
Yes, you know, it's somewhat similar to our lease for the cop years. You know, we have a lease every year from now to the end of time for the cop years, and so we build that into the operating budget. This is a one-off for seven years, and again, I'm comfortable with the funding plan that we put together to cover it.
Great, thank you, that's all.
Yep, I just, the other piece that we're looking at is the Greenlight Grant Initiative. So after the Uvalde shooting, Matthew McConaughey has created this grant that they'll match 25% of whatever the district is paying. This grant's coming out in March, and Jim Antonelli and myself and Steve are looking to write this grant. But if they look at the $150,000 that we're gonna be putting into the security, then we could get reimbursed like $400,000. And right now, there has been one Massachusetts school that received $300,000 for the security upgrades. So this is a, this is also an opportunity for us, I think, once we commit to the lease and then we provide that information to this grant, we're hopeful that, you know, we might get additional funding, and if that happens, then we're in great, we're in real great shape there, so.
Any other questions?
Well, it sounds like a very thorough approach, and what's nice is it sounds like it will be state-of-the-art. And I know the 10-year warranty, is, is there some, does the company suggest the, the tenure, the longevity of the system?
Yeah, did you, did you want to step in?
We pay for it for seven years, I mean, do you foresee, and it's impossible, I know, like 15 years, 20 years.
No, they warranty that, I think they warranty their equipment for 10 years.
It said that, yeah.
The hardware is warranted for 10 years, so. You know, for example, you know, one of the cameras stops working, they can actually troubleshoot it remotely and confirm that it's a problem with the camera itself, and they will overnight a new camera to us, and it's literally just a plug-and-play thing, it's a data cable, so the maintenance crew and tech crew can swap these out, so we don't have to, you know, call out a, a service company every time we have a problem and pay them $200 an hour. We can, we can deal with this in-house most of the time. But in addition to the, the hardware being warranted for 10 years, the, the software and firmware updates are done automatically and constantly. I mean, I see them all the time coming through, so that it's keeping the system, you know, up to date, state-of-the-art, you know, all the time.
That's great.
Your question.
Yeah, no, it does, and I mean, Fracata, presumably he's been around for some time, and, you know, it, it sounded like you guys did it pretty thorough.
Yeah, and I think the, the other thing, the only other thing I would add is that the usability of the system, it's like night and day from what we've currently had, or had before here in the high school. It's, it's so much easier to search through video, you know, find information, it's just, it's very user-friendly. So it's, it's very simple to learn, and, you know, just much, much better than what we've had in the past.
The city's looking to work with this company too.
Oh, great.
As long as I hit on a scratch ticket. But I think that would be great if we all could be under the same, same system, so.
Really?
Any other questions? Is that all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. All right, next presentation, now I'll bring it up, Steve, if you just want it, that's ready yet?
Yeah, we don't have it on the screen.
Yeah, and then you just got off.
I'll use that.
All right, so as you know, every year we update the capital improvement plan to send to the city for inclusion in the, the citywide plan. First thing on our plan this year is the, the security updates, which we don't need to beat to death anymore. I think we've covered that pretty thoroughly. Second item is the replacement of the telephone system here at the high school. I assume we've talked, you guys have talked about that in here.
No, no, we're compliant, but you can recap it.
So, you know, the system is original to when the high school was renovated 22 years ago, so it's been here as long as I have, so it's time to retire that as well. It's not E911 compliant, it's difficult to find parts to make repairs. You know, the, the tech guys are very concerned about the condition it's in now and, and being able to keep it running, so it's, this is really one of our, probably our top priority for this year on the capital plan.
On, on this one, we're hoping that the city can fund, you know, this, you know, upgrade for security. So this would be a 901 phone system, which would be $100,000, so. I'm hoping that they see we're upgrading all the other systems, and then the city council will see the need for this.
Was this on the last capital improvement plan?
This is the first time it's been on the capital plan, yeah. Roof projects, we talked a lot about at the last meeting, both the high school roof and middle school roofs on the auditorium and the gym. The only thing I'll add to that this time is that city council last night voted to approve sending the statements of interest to the MSBA, so as soon as I get the certification letter from the city clerk, I will send that into MSBA, and we wait until October to hear from them, to find out if we get into the program. Middle school roof. Brezner Hand, the MDF air conditioning upgrade. There's a computer closet off of the library in the Brezner Hand School that houses a lot of the technology equipment for that building. It's, there's been additional equipment added to it over the years, over the 10 years since the building was built, including a significant amount of equipment from the city itself, because they're doing their own upgrade and they lack rack space at, at City Hall, so they needed someplace that they could park some equipment. All of that equipment adds heat to the room. And so during the summertime, it's not unusual for that room to be up in the low 80s, which is not good for that kind of equipment. The, the current air conditioning system is working at max capacity and just can't keep up with it, so it needs to be replaced. You know, it's 10 years old, so it's, it's, you know, probably really not at the end of its life, but it, it's not able to do the job it needs to do right now, so that's on the plan for that reason.
What would you say the percentage of city equipment is versus school?
I'd have to ask the, I'd have to ask the tech guy.
I'm just thinking of the huge basement in City Hall, and how a lot of it could have been used instead of dumping it in the school.
There was a significant.
If a lot of it is city networking that's making it super hot in there, there's a huge basement at City Hall that's pretty much empty.
I, I don't know exactly the, the rationale behind putting it there, but there it is. This pickup truck has been on the, the plan for 18 years.
Maybe you should make it an electrical, and that would make, make it an EV truck, and it might sell it better.
It might, but.
That would be much more, though, the cost.
Yes, it would. You know, we're still, we're still driving, one of the, one of the maintenance guys is still driving a 2010 Ford van, but the, the frame is, is questionable, we're always concerned every September when it has to go in for inspection. So it's, it's really become important to replace that. We'd like to replace it with a pickup truck with the utility body on it, which, you know, we have one like this already, we find that it's very useful for servicing the, the various buildings, carrying things around. But also a truck instead of a van, because it can be used to plow as well, as our other plows get older, we can put a plow on this one and, and use this. We, we plow the, the Brezner Hand parking lots with our vehicles, while the, the DPS does the other buildings, so we need to keep our, our, our plows up to date. Engineering services, I've, I've talked about this one for the past few years as well. There are just some things that, problems, particularly with this building right now, that we just haven't been able to solve in-house, or with, with contractors, that we need engineering help with to look at, at finding the root cause of the problem. What you're looking at there is a stairway that comes up from the parking lot, right out here by the stadium, up to the, up to the terrace. That stairway was rebuilt in 2015 as part of the stadium renovation project. And then it was patched again in 2019, and this is what it looks like right now, five years later. So there's, there's some sort of underlying water problem affecting that whole terrace out there that we need to have a, an engineer come in and look at. And that's just one example of several around this building that we really could use some help with, so that we can, you know, not just keep fixing, patching the problem, but find the root cause and, and fix it once, and not have to do it again every few years. The integrated arts renovation project here at the high school. As you know, last year we started Space Youth Studies, looking at, at several areas of the building, and this project would, this would focus on the multimedia production lab that would kind of kick off the project. We're looking, I guess the NEF voted to approve some funding to go towards this.
They can support this project, the NEF.
So they're, they're supporting, partially supporting this financially. We need to hire the architect to do some more detailed design work so that we can get a better understanding of, of what the cost is gonna be, but we think that the estimate that you see there is, is pretty accurate for, for where we'll be. And it would be, you know, kind of a, a first step in, you know, dressing up and, you know, putting together a, a good integrated arts system here in the high school. Last year, last year, the.
Yes. The answer is yes.
Brezner Hand administration approached me about upgrading security around their office. They had a couple incidents where people gotten, had gotten into the office and made them a little bit nervous. So this project would remove a couple of the existing windows at the main entrance to the Brezner Hand School, and basically add a service window with a, with a transaction drawer. The window would be bulletproof glass. It would allow them to interact with a lot of visitors without having to allow them into the school. You know, a lot of the quick transactions could happen right there at that window, and it would just be an enhancement to the security of the, the main office at the Brezner Hand School.
Can I just clarify, is that, is that supposed to be on the exterior of the building?
Yes. Yep.
Steve, can I just ask a question on that? I mean, so that's the Brez, I mean, is that, is there a reason why the Brez is asking for and not their other schools? Or just because they've had some incidents where.
I was really just, they had some incidents, they've got the, you know, the way they're set up there, they've got the opportunity to do something like this, the way their entrance is laid out in the office.
So they have more people coming.
A lot more parent interaction at that level than at the other buildings, probably, yeah.
I would imagine.
Yeah.
The other schools see this, they might want it to. The other schools see this, they might want it to.
Right.
And, and, you know, that's, that's just a picture I found on the internet just for, for this purpose.
I think it's Brianna working on it.
It might not look exactly like that. The, the asphalt playground at the NOC Mullen, at the west end of the site is cracking, kind of falling apart. Weed's growing up through the cracks. So this has been on here for a couple of years now. This is just milling and repaving the playground area just to, to make it a little bit safer and renew it. I don't know how long it's been since that was last paved. I assume it, you know, the, I think the parking lot when we redid that a few years ago went back almost 30 years. So I think this might be just as old, but I, I don't know that for certain.
Can I just make a comment on that? I've said this before, using the word playground for theirs, a lot of liberty. I would really like to see if we can, like, to do something with that instead of just a big rectangle of asphalt. It is not a nice place even for eighth graders to run around, you know?
I have two words for you.
I'm ready.
Traffic garden.
Okay. There you go.
Do a, do a internet research for that.
Traffic garden.
You can do it. I'm just trying to write a report and then bring it to the.
I don't even know what that is. I am, I'll look that up. Traffic garden.
Traffic garden.
Traffic garden.
I'm gonna look it up.
Steve, we haven't written a CPA request for this though this year, right?
No.
Not right.
Do you think that would qualify? Is it?
Depends what you're doing with it. I mean, if, if you're doing something specific around recreation, I think you could do it. If it's more than just paving, I think you could probably make the case for it, but I don't, I don't know. Typically they don't, they don't like doing those things for that. But if it was something based around recreation, I think you could sell it.
Trafficgardens.com.
About that.
All you wanted to know.
The Mullen Playground out behind the building is currently all wood chips. Would need to be replaced every two to three years or at least topped off. And it makes a lot of the play structures inaccessible to students in wheelchairs or, or with other disabilities. This matting would go in place of the wood chips. It would be a lot less maintenance and make the playground more inclusive.
It's a strange thing that building is that old. And I wish we thought about doing that type of stuff. Isn't there one section that's got the matting though? Is that the tot lot part?
No.
There's none of that? That's a surface?
Playground?
No, you're thinking of Bres.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
So now we're, now we're at the Bres Playground, which does have the rubber surfacing.
Right.
Which is now 10, 11 years old and cracking and needs to be replaced soon. It's very expensive for a playground surface. You know, they, they tell you it's, it's maintenance free for many years, but they don't tell you how much it's going to cost when it gets to the end of its life. So these are, these numbers are from a quote that we got last year. Something that's gonna need to be addressed in the next two, three years probably. Library carpet in here. If you look around, you'll find a lot of tears, rips. What we'd like to do in here is, is replace this with carpet tiles like what we have in the, the lab behind us there, which are, you know, much more solid and can be replaced if they, if there are any issues with them. It's just, it's just worn out.
I just, I know, I know it's late, but is this not something that we can use 30 grand one time? We can't use choice funding for that?
Yeah, we could take.
Does it count? I mean, I've, I've seen this every year since I've been on the school committee and it's, and it's never been paid for.
I'm not sure. I'll have to look.
It just seems like a small, that's gonna be the low, the cheapest thing on your list, right?
Could be. Yeah.
It couldn't come out of maintenance, like our maintenance line item or do we have anything like that?
Nothing that.
Nothing that much.
Tennis courts. This is, this is a project to add three more tennis courts so that our high school tennis team can all play in the same place, can host home matches. More tennis courts that the community would have available would be located right adjacent to the two existing tennis courts down at NOC. This is something that I will be going to the CPC with a week from tomorrow and see if we can get some support there for this. Just incidentally, a group called, calling themselves the Friends of Newburyport Tennis has donated $21,000 towards the design work for this project. This is a new one that we haven't talked about before. This came about after some discussions with National Grid, Molly Attenborough and members of the, the mayor's energy task force. This, this project would replace both the boilers here at the high school and the chillers on the roof with electric heat pumps. Now, it's, it's a little, feels a little funny to me because I've spent the last 20 years trying to reduce our electric load in this, you know, all of our buildings. And now the trend is towards electrification because we could combine it with a solar project after our roofs are done and, you know, run, run the, the heat pumps with electricity generated here at the building itself. So it, it's got a big price tag on it, but National Grid would kick in about 2 million of that through their incentives. And MSBA is opening up a program next year for electrification projects. So they would participate in the cost as well. Our, our reimbursement raise about 43% with MSBA. So, you know, that would help to, to defray some of the cost as well. And it moves the city towards their carbon reduction goals.
Would the, Steve, I'm sorry, would the Inflation Reduction Act be a possibility for that? Or are we just not close enough right now to like go for something?
I, I, I don't know. I'm not sure. You know, the project is a few years out before it would be ready to go. So, yeah, I'm not sure what the answer would be to that.
That's definitely worth looking into though. I was talking about that with Don Chan recently. There's, there's, there's tons of money from the IRA that can be accessed.
Yeah. And I think Molly had some other ideas for, for funding as well. So after, after the Science Wing Edition and renovation project was, was kind of set aside, we talked a little bit about just doing a kind of a space use study up there in the science area just to see if, if we could better use those spaces with just some minor renovations rather than anything major. Just kind of look at how they're used and, and see what could be done to, to make the use of the space more efficient. So, you know, with the, with the integrated arts study and, and projects going on right now, this is kind of getting kicked down the road a little bit just because that pro, the integrated arts project is kind of taking priority. But this is just something to keep on our radar for, for potential down the road.
Steve, was there any talk, I'm sorry, I keep asking questions. Was there any talk, because I know when we, we took the tour with like Dr. Hobbs and like went through like the science studies, was, was there any talk about like, I think they talked a little bit about like, you know, needing more outlets or there was like things that they thought they could be doing. Is it best to probably wait on something like that? Or is this something that we could help?
Yeah, there might be, there might be small things. I mean, one of, one of the things they talked about was, was double doors under the classroom so they can get bigger equipment in and out. You know, that's potentially something that could be done in the, I mean, it's, it would be a little bit of a project, but, you know, be a smaller project. You know, can, the trend now is, is combining classrooms and labs together so that they're not separate rooms. So you're moving from one to the other. So, you know, how, you know, are there things that we can do along those lines to, to improve the, the usability of those rooms? You know, it's, you know, so we're, we're hoping through that study, we could find some.
Yeah.
Some simple things to do. Energy reduction projects, we just finished up replacing all of the lights at the Bresnahan and NOC Mullen with LEDs. So those two projects are complete. We have electricians in the building tonight working on the final phase of converting the lights to LEDs here. So, you know, we've, we've completed a lot of, of the, the lighting upgrades. That's all funded through National Grid rebates and incentives, on bill repayment programs and solar credits that we get from, from a program that we're, that we're operating Front door on the high school, I think it was last replaced during the renovation project. It sees a lot of use. It sags a bit. It's summertime, it swells up so that it doesn't close on its own. So it's a security issue. Wintertime, it shrinks down. So there's a gap about an inch wide. So it's just, it's, it's time to replace that with something that's not so susceptible to, to weather, weather fluctuations. And that might be something that could go to the CPC as a historic.
Historic.
Yeah. And then once the roofs are done, we've got some plaster repairs to do in the auditorium. And that's, that's it. Any other questions?
Swarker?
I have another one to add. No, I just, I think I've brought this up before. I, I continue to be a little concerned about the state of the parking lot out front in front of the high school. And every year, it seems like we're getting closer and closer to some of those really nice big beech trees out front. And I don't know where that falls on the list of items to, to address in terms of, I think there's been some, some care given to the edges, but it seems to me we're, we keep expanding into that lawn to provide parking that maybe we shouldn't be doing. So I didn't know if you had that on your radar in terms of.
Yeah. We, when we were talking about the science lab renovation project, it was, it was actually a line in there to address the, the parking lot. You know, as more staff has been added over the years, there's more cars, there's more.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, it's become tough to find parking around here. And people are just parking wherever they can squeeze their cars into.
Yeah. And I, I get why people are doing it, but it's, it is causing damage. I mean, there's, there's erosion issues and so anyway, just.
I mean, we'd have to, we'd have to put up physical barriers.
Yeah.
Of some, in some way to, to prevent people from parking in certain areas.
Maybe it's just something we can keep on the city's radar too, because I, it's just that the trees are pretty significant trees and starting to look kind of crummy in the driveway. So it's not, you know, necessarily a capital improvement request per se, but just maybe making sure we're not gonna get to a situation where it just fails and we lose a tree or something.
Anyone else?
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Would everyone be okay with a five minute recess before we move on? Five?
Sure.
Sure. Okay. Great.
Did you say the next agenda is full?
Well, we have two big things. It's more that than the number of items because we will be voting for the Whittier rep, which is gonna be, take some time. And then we'll be getting the budget presentations from all the principals. So.
I was just wondering if we should move the calendar to that one, to the next one because the laundry list I have, we're not going to get through that fast tonight. And it's already nine o'clock.
Okay. Well, we, we can talk about that in a minute.
We can stay past, past nine.
I don't know if you've been part, you've never been part of one of those meetings.
Well, I mean, the idea is to. Well, I mean, the idea is to... Is there anything you would like to say about the calendar? I mean, we're pretty much just following all of the laws and contracts here, right?
Correct.
But if there's anything you want to add or point out?
The first draft is very similar to the calendar of this year. And as we said, we all know the date that we start. And so I think, you know, there's been a lot of discussion over the years on the calendar. And I think it's something going into next year's negotiation with our favorite union, the NTA, who's over there. That would be professional development, early release, PD, all of that time, I think, you know, would be more of a negotiating item moving forward. So. But we just kept the calendar very similar to this year's calendar with all the dates and everything.
I appreciate the fact that you've talked about this a lot over the years. So I'm reticent to ask for redundancy, but Ms. Hall did a really nice job in the newsletter, sort of explicating sort of where we came from, where we're at. And thank you for saying where we may or may not be going in the future. But could you just reiterate that, like how we landed here with the Labor Day cutoff?
And with the start date?
Start date, exactly.
I can tell you.
Thank you.
Go for it.
So I came on six years ago-ish, and it was, I think, the first calendar discussion. It went on for like four meetings. It went on and on. And it was just like, well, I like the beach. I don't like the beach. It was all about, like, you know, people's personal preferences about weather.
The before versus after Labor Day debate.
Before Labor Day start, right? And it was the, you know, me, I grew up, it was always start Tuesday after Labor Day. And someone's like, that never happened. I live in Florida. It was crazy. And went on and on and on. So we came up with the, which I'm sure was in that newsletter, which I didn't get to read, I'm sorry.
Well, the policy is also in the packet.
Right.
So if you're looking at the packet, it's just...
But the, in the days when Labor Day falls between September 1 to 4, we start after, and after the 4th, we start before. And shame on me when we went and did this, and we finally did that after, like, were you even here when we finally did it?
Yeah.
Okay. So, but it happened before you, so it was like the third year I was on. And we finally passed it. And I don't know how we never noticed that part of, based on the contract with our fabulous NTA, has the faculty days won't start after Labor Day, which kind of negates the entire, you know, thing of 1 to 4 and 5 to 7. But here we are. It's fabulous.
Yeah. And that's, those are some of the topics during negotiations. And we'll have a good discussion on some of those PD days, because, as I said, for the union to get their input on how to maximize, especially those full days, I think, you know, we did move one to the beginning of the school year, which has been very beneficial, if you recall. So we have the teachers back. And then that first PD day, building-based, gives the teachers the opportunity to, you know, have the meetings, to look at their class list, make sure if there's any students on 504s or IEPs. So that day was very beneficial. So working with our union, and really taking a look at all of the professional development time and days, I think, you know, we'll probably have a, maybe a better product after we negotiate. So that would be something that we would want to collaborate with the union on. But that's, as Mr. Callahan said, to move that PD day before the start, that's, that was, we attempted to try to do that last year, but the contract language, you know, doesn't allow the teachers to come in before the start of school.
So it's a point of fact that even if you wanted to, for this given upcoming calendar school year, it can't be done before Labor Day.
That's all right. It's on the Thursday.
Yeah. And again, I'm sorry for the redundancy, but there's a lot of, you know, folks that have taken notice and...
And since we came up with that, there's a whole bunch of new parents, too, right?
Yeah, exactly.
New batch, yeah. Can I keep going?
Can I just say one thing about that, though, before you go again?
Sure.
But it really, it'd only save us a couple of days, right? I mean, like, if you did, if we did do it the week before, say, this year...
Save one.
The contract for the teachers can't have it on Friday before, right?
Right. It would be that Wednesday, Thursday.
So you'd only gain two days, right?
You gain two, yeah.
Well, with the Juneteenth coming in, that's the newer issue.
No, but we don't get snow anymore. So we only do snow days for no-snow days. So we only give one of those a year.
John Reardon admitting that.
We already got, you're done. Everyone got their one snow day with no snow, so...
Enjoyed.
The only thing I'll say about the calendar, Superintendent, is that the thing I've always said, the Labor Day thing aside, ER days are difficult for people, especially with young kids, working parents. And my whole suggestion every year was that they always fall either on the Friday before a holiday, Monday, or before a vacation week. This calendar has only two that meet that criteria, which is kind of what it was when I first started. And it seems that over the years, we've increased it to have more Fridays before Monday holidays or vacation weeks, and now they're decreasing again. And literally, I have suggestions September, December, January, February, April, and May, moving every one of those ER days. But I won't get into it extensively now, but that's what it's going to be.
Do you, I mean, do you want to just, you can email him those dates for consideration?
Sure. It's pretty simple.
But you're going to say it's an attendance thing.
Oh.
What can I say?
Well, a Friday's a Friday, but you're saying it would be advantageous for families if it were linked to...
It's generally easier for parents to take a half-day off of work on a Friday. And that's why they'll move to Fridays, which is great, because they used to be random Thursdays and things like that.
But you're talking about certain Fridays.
Yeah. But it also comes down to, you know, and Dave Hockeys has always talked about this, consistency of learning days. And when you have, I mean, November's a disaster because of Thanksgiving. But you have December, you have the Thanksgiving week, short week, right? Two, two and a half days. And then you come back, and you have nine days of school, and then a half-day. But if you move that ER day in December till the 20th, you have more consistency in days of, full days of school, and then you give the people the half-day on the Friday before the Christmas break. Things like that. But the fear is that all the people who are going to take advantage of it are going to take advantage of it. And my whole standing is that they're going to do it anyway. The people who are going to not come to school, or send their kids to school because they want to take an extra time off to go skiing or something, are going to take that half-day regardless of whether it's a hat, a ER day, they'll take a full day off. And the people who are going to play by the rules will play by the rules. I'd like to see the actual numbers, because I've seen them before, and they're not as extensive.
My first three years, I was doing data breakdowns on...
I think I still have a note from Susan Vaccaro and what it was, and it was not a whole lot more. But anyway, we don't have to go over it now.
I think we were pretty high.
I'll send you a polite email.
Perfect.
And we can address it at the next go for this. Thank you.
Sounds good. Anyone else? All right. So we'll get into the subcommittee updates. Brian, Mr. Callahan, anything on finance?
Yeah. Quickly, we met, I don't have the minutes yet from Mr. Little Hale. The one thing I will say, we talked about the fundraising advisory committee, and then that got into the acceptance of gifts, which goes to policy, and when we actually need to vote on the acceptance of a gift, whether it is from the NEF, or Gridiron, or whoever it's from. So I think that's going to have to, Ms. Walker's going to come into our discussion about the report on that fundraising advisory committee, so we can work together to get that going. And then, the one question, Mr. Little Hale, if you're available, I was there, Mr. Bogrom, Ms. Hall, we're all there. So Phil went over the, I'm sorry, I'm losing my space here, went over the end-of-year report. And I don't know if Ms. Walker and the mayor want to hear Phil talk about the end-of-year report?
Well, are there highlights? Could we get, or could we get it at the next meeting? Just highlights of what the end-of-year report reveals?
Sure. Could you do that?
Because you said you don't have the minutes yet. But yeah, I'd like to get a synopsis.
Okay.
That'd be great.
We talked about Whittier a little bit, and we all know what's going on there. And then the fiscal year '25 budget, which we already heard today. That's it.
All right. Section J.
Yes. I'm sorry that this falls on a heavy agenda night, but we're going to get through this.
We already, this is the second reading, right?
Yes, the second reading.
Much changes to the first?
No, there are none. So I could...
They should approve section J.
So, yeah. And mainly, like, okay, we can do it that way. I mean, I did go through every detail that we, in the changes last time, in the first read. In the packet and posted online are the summary of the changes that were made, recommended to J, section J. And then, as well, there are redlined versions showing where we're inserting new language and removing existing language. And then there are a few new policies. If you want, we could just do it that way. Do people want to go through each specific one?
I would be okay with making a motion, and then seconding, and then you could maybe just highlight the changes again real quick.
That sounds good.
I don't think we need to go through each one.
So I think, go ahead.
Nope, you go ahead.
I think the motion would be to move to approve the changes to section J as presented.
Second.
Discussion?
Okay. So maybe I'll just focus on, I'm just going to scan my notes and see what would be important to maybe highlight.
I did have one question the last time. I don't want to interrupt your flow right now.
Yeah, I was going to mention that. I think that's on the next page.
Okay. Go ahead, then.
So I think I'll scan ahead to JFABC, which is the admission of transfer students. And we were, we made some revisions there, where the Newbury Port version of the policy is much more detailed than the MAS C version, is broader in scope. And so we realigned to be with, to be more consistent with the MAS C policy, where it specifically addresses transfers from charter schools, which was its original intention. So hence, removing a lot of that other language, which is actually covered in other areas of our policies. The next one I guess I could focus on is JH, student absences and excuses, where we, a lot of the information that was in our existing version falls under procedure. And we've been trying, as you guys know, we've been trying to consistently kind of take things out of the policy manual that are more procedural, as long as they are covered in other procedural documents, and simplifying, updating with the MAS C version.
Should we say that half-day absences on early-release days are okay?
That's a totally different section. We added a new student publication section, and we also added a new policy on gang activity in secret societies, again, consistent with MAS C recommendations. So I think the question last time was JIH? C? I don't know. Oh, JICH. So we had a question last time about making some updates. Was it that one that was the...
Breathalyzer?
Yeah.
Was it, well, I just know we received an email from a parent who had concerns about, you know, does the school have the right to do that? And I don't know if that would be here or in a handbook, but is that...
Yes, we do. And, yeah.
Yeah, just want to make sure.
And it's also, Mr. Wolf and the team are updating their handbook to be more specific.
More specific language about that?
Correct. And that came out of his school council.
Great.
So they went over the student handbook and suggestions from parents to be a little bit more specific with that.
So that's not necessarily something we need to spell out in the policy here. Okay.
And I think we vote on the handbook.
Correct.
Okay. Great.
JICK is harassment of students, and this is important because there are, we, generally, harassment is something we want to make sure we're up to date on in our, in our policies to be consistent with state law and federal law. Similarly, J, to what my comments before, the current regulations were not consistent, so, or it wasn't consistent with current regulations and had a lot of quotes. So we replaced it with the MAS C version. A lot of cross-reference updates. Let's see. We did remove some policies that were, that just were duplicated by other policies, specifically the JKA corporal punishments covered by another policy, and JLA, which is student insurance program. So there's some situations where we just remove the policy because it's not unnecessary. And I think that's most of it. Yeah. I don't see any other highlights. Anybody have any questions or want me to go into any more detail, any of the specific sections?
I'm all set.
We're all set?
Okay. Great. Appreciate that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
So we will be bringing K and L forward. We made it that through, that made it through policy. And then we'll find out what the right time to do that is, but...
I can be in touch with you about that as the agendas.
And those are not substantive. That's not a big lift. And then, we will probably start going back through ones that we postpone. We'll probably start with the ones related to fundraising, and some of the things that are related to the fundraising subcommittee or advisory committee. So, yeah.
So K and L are the last two, last two sections. Great. Yeah. And I'll be in touch with you about where that might fit in.
And I believe staff is still working on a March goal to get all the policies back up into that format that they were in originally, where they're searchable, and, you know...
That'll be great.
...there's a deck online and stuff like that. Okay. Great. Thanks, everyone.
Mr. Callahan, and do you have an update on the fundraising advisory committee?
We had our last meeting on the 12th. That was with the athletic director. Sean, can you get us that presentation digitally?
Yeah. Didn't we send?
He shared it, so you should have gotten a notification. But I'll send it.
You have a copy of it, though?
I have a link.
And you want me to go to policy on the 11th to talk about stuff like that?
Yes.
Okay. And we're done, and now we just have to come up with the findings and report out to the school committee.
Okay. So maybe on a future agenda, you'll have a bit of a presentation on that?
Yeah, I guess I'll go, I'll be with Ms. Walker, and then I will attend the policy subcommittee on March 11th. And then, we'll see what happens, where we think we're going to end up being able to present.
Okay. So maybe like the first meeting in April?
Maybe.
Probably not March 18th, right?
No, no, no.
No.
So sometime in April, maybe. Okay. Sounds good. And has this still met?
We were supposed to meet on that day that the school...
Oh, the snow day. Right.
So we did not meet.
Right.
We were always safe.
All good. All right. So you'll be, yeah, you'll let me know about the fundraising committee presentation. And then, new business, I have some. Does anyone else? Main thing is just planning for the Whittier rep vote, which, you know, I'd love if we could get it done at our next meeting on March 4th. We do have six candidates. We, my understanding, Mayor, said it's kind of at our discretion how we handle this. So I don't know if you have thoughts about, I mean, we can do it the same way we did last time. It's just that it's going to take more time because it's six people. But invite them all, give them five minutes to speak, a little time for questions.
Yeah, I would keep, I mean, I think you've got to be consistent.
Stick to that format.
Stick to that format. Yeah.
I was thinking that we could potentially do a special meeting to start earlier, but you said that wouldn't work for you, right, Ms. Walker?
It would be, is it a Monday night or a Tuesday?
It is Monday.
Monday night, the 4th.
Mm-hmm. Would that work for anyone else if we did like a special meeting at 5:30?
I think that would be great.
I can't. Oh, yeah, I can, that day. But I would, it might be good to check with the other two members.
Well, I know that... Well, I know that, that Ms. Higgins isn't going to be here anyways, but, yeah, I can, I can check with Ms. Shaw. Could you do five, or would that be, no, five, so 5:30, I mean, this could take more than an hour, but that's not really a problem, right? We can still have this meeting posted for 6:30. If it starts a little bit later, that's not critical, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I guess a question on the process, like, we talked last time about maybe splitting this into two meetings. You know, I, there's, I, I do kind of feel that that might be a good way to proceed on this. I think it gives the opportunity for, you know, there's, there's a particular amount of attention on this this year, we have a number of candidates. You know, it, it doesn't mean that we're going to be like deliberating between the two meetings, obviously, but it does give members of the public to, you know, a chance to give input, because there wouldn't be an opportunity for that if we just heard from them and made a vote. So that's, that's my view, is that it would be nice to maybe carry this over to meetings. I also, I think the process for how we vote, we might want to think about a little bit. You know, there's a scenario where we could all vote for one person, and then we don't, never kind of stuck. I almost wonder if we want to do like a nomination vote, where, you know, we nominate, individuals nominate of the six after they've done their presentation, or maybe the following meeting, you know, we, I nominate so-and-so second, and then we vote on a slate of candidates versus every, every, just going through each candidate and seeing how many votes they get, just...
Isn't that, isn't that how it's done, just like when we nominate to fill a position on school committee, right?
No, no, we've just said the name of the person we prefer.
Well, that's what I mean, right, so...
Well, that's what I was going to say, I was going to say it's not different than when we fill a open seat on the, the school committee.
Right.
And we just keep doing rounds of votes.
There's actually nothing written down on how to do it.
I personally don't like that process, I'd rather just, you know, focus it down onto a few candidates if we can, because I just think it's more fair, but...
Can we check with legal if there's a way we're actually supposed to do it?
I think that there is no, we went through this in the fall when we had two people, and there was nothing.
Yeah, this is sort of like...
Nothing in our policy, nothing in Whittier's policy.
The nominating thing is more just a procedural way of doing it, it's like a parliamentary procedure, I don't know that it would be wrong, right or, right or wrong, but we could certainly confirm that. It's just more that, it just basically adds in, builds in a step. It's like when you're filling a, you know...
I know, I'm just saying that we don't do that for a larger, for our own school committee, we just say, say the name.
I think, I think honestly, we could probably have asked for that process, be different.
But here we are.
But here we are.
Here we are.
So, yeah, I mean, it'd be like if I nominate so-and-so to be the chair, you know, they, oh...
That is how we do it.
Yeah, exactly.
So when you say a slate, you're saying like, are you saying like, keep, like a number of people to move forward?
But I mean, so you, so you basically, everybody gets a chance to present, and then people can nominate who they think of those candidates we want to vote on. And if they get a second, then they're the one of the, and everybody, any, you know, anybody can nominate.
Oh, I see what you're saying, so...
You're just calling down the number.
So you're kind of narrowing the field, so...
So we don't have to vote on every single candidate.
So a number of people might get nominated, right?
Correct, yes.
And then, and then you could say the name of one of the nominated people.
Correct.
Okay, I mean...
But you still could nominate all six people.
In theory, yeah.
In theory, but, I don't know.
Yeah. I'm not sure that that would save time necessarily, because if we go around and we all say who our first choice is, isn't that sort of the same as each nominating someone, in a sense?
Well, not everybody has to nominate.
That's true.
Anyway, we, that's just a, I don't think it's going to be a time saver, I just think it's a little bit more fair, I don't, I just don't like having everybody kind of just vote.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, it's a little unwieldy.
Well, we could still discuss before we vote, which happened the last time.
I think that's the part of the nominating process that I like, is if you say, I am going to nominate so-and-so, and I support them for this reason, and then the second can say, and I agree, and I support them for this reason, and then you can have discussion. Whereas when we're just voting on each one, it's a little unwieldy to say, I'm going to vote yes, and this is why. I mean, it's not really, it's more just, to me, it just makes it more of a process that is a little more fair in how we represent ourselves, and, and the candidates can hear from why we're voting one way or the other.
I don't know, how, everyone looks very tired, so...
I don't know.
I don't know.
I mean, I think that's probably, you guys can probably figure that out.
Okay, but can we tentatively agree on a 5:30 special meeting? Is everyone okay with that?
Sure, I think so.
And we'll, you know...
Are you open to considering splitting the meeting into two, so that people from members of the public can...
I'm okay with that. Like I said, I don't, I mean, all these meetings going forward are going to be packed.
Yeah.
So I don't want to overburden other meetings, but if we're just taking a vote, let's say, in the next meeting, if we do a special, I like meet the candidates, and then we, you know, do a vote the next meeting, that's fine with me.
So it would just be a chance for them to do their five minutes, us to ask questions, but we wouldn't do any voting or deliberating? Is that what you're suggesting?
That's my suggestion.
Okay.
I don't know if others agree.
I mean, I'm open to that. I think then the voting would be, need to be...
I don't know what the public has to do, they're not elected officials, they're appointed just by us to represent, we don't know what, right? We still don't even know on a legal basis what their responsibility is.
Well, but Mr. Callahan, I mean, it's our process to run, and if we think that there's, we could have, we could invite public input, it's not that we're asking to hold a public hearing, but at least it gives, it gives a little bit of, people will have opinions, they can share them.
Yeah. I, I'd like the district to check legal again on what the actual responsibilities are of the Whittier reps and who they're responsible to and all that, and actually have something written down.
You probably have looked into that pretty thoroughly, would you say?
Well, there's just, there's not a whole lot there. I mean, I think if you go back to the, the agreement in 1967, I mean, I think some of the things that we were hearing during, you know, the recent campaign was, you know, once they're appointed, they're kind of...
They serve the district, the Whittier district, yeah.
The district, opposed to like having responsibilities. I think we could do that on our own and make, make that a part of whoever we appoint, that's what I would suggest, is have, I don't know if it's a policy, but have some sort of, you know, this is what we expect of our Whittier reps that we appoint, and so there's an expectation when they get there, and it's not like, it's not their choice whether they come here, you know, when we ask them to, it's, it's, no, it's part of, you know, you're getting this appointment, and we're requiring you to come back, you know, once a month, wherever the chair or vice chair, you know, decides to schedule you on the agenda. You know, I, I think, I think those are things that we could set up, you know, on our own. I don't know if that becomes part of, you know, any kind of amendments to the regional agreement or things like that, I mean, I think those are things individuals, you know, cities and towns should figure out. Like I said, it's very different, you know, let's say with like the, you know, try school current reps and protect reps and the changes, it's, it's a little bit more straightforward for aims to be, meaningful in your report. But, yeah, no, I would love to set expectations, but you're right, it's, there's not a whole lot of things out there to, to talk about it. I've seen it in like two different locations. That's why I asked, I mean, there's just a lot of things with Whittier, and there's just not a lot, it's very hard to get any kind of information. So I'm hoping as we move forward, those, those types of things can change, but, you know, it should be very easy to ask, access information about what, what they've done, but it's, it's difficult.
I know it's, the current term's up March 31st, so what happens if we try and do a two-meeting thing and we can't schedule it?
Well, we would, we would, I think we would just vote then at our March 18th meeting.
Yeah, that's what I was just, yeah.
Okay.
But, yeah, we, I guess we just have to figure out the details around that, like, what's happening in the two weeks, it's, that's like, you're thinking that's like an opportunity for the public to reach out to us for feedback?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we would do, we can decide the format of the voting, like, do we invite everyone back? That's the tricky part, but maybe, if they want to.
It'll be an optional, I mean, if they're not going to participate in the 18th meeting, they say, you can either come or you can watch it online, like, if you're going to take a vote.
Right.
I mean, even if the public doesn't get back with feedback, I mean, I think it's just an opportunity, it's like, that's going to be a lot to process.
It is, I...
And I think we've got six really good candidates as well.
I think that's, yeah.
So it just, you know, you know, in that type of format, you know, the last person you hear maybe always sticks out, so maybe this would give us a chance to kind of step back, step back and kind of, you know, hear what, hear, you know, I mean, I'm sure we all have different ideas of what, what we're looking for.
It just, it just makes me feel more comfortable that, you know, we're, right, up until that point, we're just going to know them on paper, and then we hear from them, and then to jump into voting after hearing from six people just seems a little bit rushed.
It's a lot, right, right, so all of their...
It is, it is a terrible setup.
Yeah, so just if we have some control over how we do it, if we can spread it over two meetings, I think that might be...
All of their applications will, will be in the packet that'll go out on Thursday, so then that's when it's public, people can see, they can read about the candidates.
Yeah.
A few days later, they do their presentations, and then two weeks later, we have some deliberations and, and a vote. I think that's reasonable. All right, was there anything else for new business?
I had a, a quick, this can come up later, but I, I did want to get in there while it's still fresh, and this runs parallel to the discussion we're just having right now about process and protocol, as well as the restructuring of the Director of People's Services, and playing off this excellent historical perspective on strengthening, you know, human resource management. If at some point we could have a discussion about the appointment of positions that explicitly or directly fall more under our auspices, and fortunately, these, presumably, we're not going to have any of these hires anytime soon, which is great, but how that looks so that we're not having this discussion down the road about process when, when we have another appointment of that sort, and maybe Ms. Keely could help us out with that, you know, what that protocol looks like. It'd be great, thank you.
I'll just say one thing for new business on, on Whittier. I've got my first Whittier Task Force meeting on Wednesday, the, the 6th, at City Hall. Yeah, I just want to let you guys know that.
Okay.
And again, we're, we're really just looking at the regional agreement, so the school's not going to be involved at all, no administration from the schools, this is just the 11 communities, and I've asked for, I think I already said this to everybody, but town managers and managers to be a part, and then that other person from the community should be a select board member or a city councillor, since they will eventually be the ones voting on any kind of changes that, that the group comes up with. And I'm hoping that group as well will be used to vet some of these maybe next steps for Whittier that the, the reps were kind of talking about tonight. I mean, Superintendent told us when they brought us together after the vote, that our